Give Don two minutes.
It's a good-looking clock.
Fine-looking if you don't care about the time.
Exactly, yep.
Are you just gonna call it into executive?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait a few minutes for Don, two minutes. Two more minutes and then we'll go in.
So everybody else for executive for us is downstairs, ready to go.
Okay. Actually had one of his quotes put on canvas for my office. Violent physical aggression that was outrageous, uncivilized, intolerable, and inspired by malice such that it shocks the conscience. And I put priceless underneath it, and I had it blown up for my office.
I think people expected him to see it.
Good for you.
Ah, okay.
And they didn't see it, and so it's just weeds coming up now.
Oh.
If the answer's that's as far as they go, that's okay, I'll tell them, I just need to, maybe check it, get back to them.
Excuse me.
I can respond either way.
I'll talk to Dan again, so I will tell you that it was a good day because I did my management by walking around, and so I went to different departments today, which was helpful, I enjoyed it, and got a lot out of it.
Yeah.
Dan and I were talking about stuff like that. I would imagine that we would have contemplated that they would restore it to what it was, which would be grass and not weeds.
I've come from my neighbors where they, where they filled in next to the curb with topsoil.
Yeah.
They just left it like that, so now everyone, a lot of people have a border of weeds coming up.
Oh, oh.
I'm one of them, my lawn's sausage grease.
Sort of blends.
Jamie, you ready?
In any case, yeah, Joe, just, yes, you know, I just want to tell them to look into it, I think they should do it.
Good, he's walking in right now. Good evening, I'm gonna call the Harwich Board of Selectmen's meeting for July 26, 2021, to order. We're going to go into executive session, returning to open session at 6:00 P.M. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I move that we go into executive session for four topics. General law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 2 and 3, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel, and to conduct contract negotiations with union personnel, SEIU. Second item is pursuant to mass general law 30, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Paragraph 3, to discuss with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions. If an open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position, and the chair so declares, including but not limited to the International Association of Firefighters. Third, pursuant to mass general law, Chapter 30A, 21A, Paragraph 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, and the chair so declares. Christopher D. Wise versus Town of Harwich Planning Board and Hall's Path. And fourth, pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 3, to discuss litigation strategy with respect to the case of Ember Pizza Inc. et al. versus the Town of Harwich et al., Suffolk County Superior Court, Civil Docket Number 2184CV01461. If discussing the matter in open session will have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position, and the chair so declares.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded to go into executive session for the reasons just listed. Just as a point of information, I believe D. is the case of Ember Pizza and Port Restaurant. It's not just the singular, I believe the litigation was filed by Attorney Tomlinson for both restaurants, not just one.
That is correct, however, the court's docket and their naming nomenclature refers it simply as Ember et al.
Okay, thank you. With that said, I'll do a roll call vote. In favor, Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. We are now going to go down to the selectmen's office for executive session. Good evening, I'm gonna call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, July 26, 2021, back to order. We started tonight an executive session at 5:00 to discuss four topics, two of them were union-related. One was, was SEIU Union where no decision was made. The second was with the International Association of Firefighters, and we did ratify a contract with them for one year. The second two were related to lawsuits. The first one was Christopher Wise versus the Town of Harwich Planning Board, and that's in relation to Hall's Path. It was just a strategy session, we made no decisions. The last one was the, the latest of lawsuits from the Ember and the Port, which was also a strategy session. No decisions, go ahead.
Sorry, if I may, that IAFF, as you mentioned, is subject to future appropriation by town meeting.
Thank you. With that, I'd ask that you join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anyone for weekly briefing?
Chairman John Redone, Harbor Master, just wanna announce, the town was awarded a grant from the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development this past week, $36,000 for dredging Allen Harbor Project. There's a nice little ceremony last week where they handed out the announcements, so.
Great work, John, and thank you.
Thanks.
It's great news. Anyone else for weekly briefing? Public comments and announcements?
Now, Michael, then I have, what I reminded by comment on the radio, radio a couple days ago, that it's two years since we had the tornado come through Harwich. And I've forgotten it already, but we probably need to, to pause a second and remind ourselves what a great community we live in. Everyone helped out, everyone in Harwich, and in fact, including the county and the state. Came together and we cleaned, got businesses back open in, in record time. So we need to pause and just remember the good things occasionally.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, we're gonna move to public hearings and presentations. So the first is vote to approve the 2021 to 2031 Comcast renewal contract. Mary, would you read the public hearing notice to open the public hearing?
This was published in the Cape Cod Chronicle, July 8, 2021, a legal notice, the Town of Harwich Cable Television Cable License Renewal Proceedings. The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Harwich, being the town's cable television licensing issuing authority, hereby gives notice that on July 26, 2021, at no earlier than 6:00 P.M. in the Don B. Griffin Hearing Room, Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing concerning the proposed cable television renewal license for Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC. The purpose of the proceeding is to accept public comment on formally, formally consider and possibly take final action, including possible approval of the proposed renewal license. Public comment on town renewal needs and the proposed renewal is invited. Copies of renewal documents are available for public inspection and copying care of the town clerk or his or her municipal designate. For further information and copies of renewal records, contact Jamie Goodwin, care of the town hall. By order of the Board of Selectmen as cable television licensing issuing authority. Cape Cod Chronicle, July 8 and July 15, 2021.
Thank you, Mary. Before I get to you, Jamie, Joe?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and yes, before we turn it over to our very capable station manager for Channel 18, I would be remiss if I did not inform the board and the public assembled that, as you can see in your packet, the memorandum that was provided by, by Jamie, one of my earliest acts, acts as acting town administrator, and then as permanent town administrator, for lack of a better word, was to first affirm my predecessor's appointment as Jamie to be the town's point person on this 10-year contract effort. It was a very easy decision for me to make because my first meeting with Jamie, at her initiative, she made it very clear to me that she knew exactly what was going on and exactly what needed to be done. So it was easy for me to rely upon her. Jamie did bring me into the process about a year ago, and I think we've been very well-served by our station manager, and look forward to her presentation tonight because she has been at the forefront of this for many years, and we will bear fruit from those actions hopefully for many more years. So I'd be remiss if I didn't make her blush by saying that, because she's done phenomenal work. And at that, Mr. Chairman and members, I would like to turn it over to her.
Great, thank you. Uh, for the two gentlemen in the back, there's four seats up front if you wanted to sit down.
Jamie Goodwin, Station Manager, Channel 18. We started this process in February of 2019 when the town retained specialized council bill August. We then had a ascertainment hearing in May of 2019, which is very well-attended. I think we had 20 or more department heads, community organizations that attended that hearing to speak to Mike Gaila, who's the senior manager of Government Affairs for Comcast, and they got up and, and explained to them why Channel 18 in the town of Harwich was so valuable. Then we moved into surveying the citizens of Harwich. We posted a survey on our website to ask the citizens how they felt they were being served by Comcast, served specifically by Channel 18, Channel 22, the high school, and Channel 99, which is the Cape Cod Community Media Center. And that was, we had a lot of responses to that, we had over 150 responses. The, our neighboring towns, Dennis and Chatham, borrowed that survey from us to use for their own ascertainment hearing. We were the first one in our neighboring towns to start this process, so a lot of other municipalities came to me to ask how they would enter into this process and what, what the, the feeling from Comcast was. I believe that this new 10-year contract is gonna serve us well into the future. We did have a lot of language changes, as we do not use VCRs anymore to program our station. We have been awarded a first-ever HD station, and that will be probably fought over between the four cable licenses that we have for this town, and you as the issuing authority will decide who that goes to. We are prepared here in Harwich to make that change, we've been working on that since 2016. We record in HD, we just don't broadcast in HD. I will answer any questions if anyone has any.
Thank you, Jamie, I'm gonna go to the public first, the public hearing part of this. Is there anyone in the public that has comments on this contract renewal? Get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0, Joe. Board comments, Don?
I have none.
Mary?
No.
Larry?
Uh, a question, what are video return lines?
Video return lines is how we send our signal. So from here, we have a video return line to the community center and vice versa. We hopefully to have one from the police department to the community center. The community center is our head end, so we send a signal to the community center, the school sends a signal to the community center, and then I'm so fortunate to maintain those pieces of equipment that then send a signal to Comcast, and they maintain that line to their head end. We also, in this new license, we have the ability to put a station in at the water department and the cultural center if that pans out after its trial period.
Thank you.
Thank you, I have no comments, great job, Jamie.
Can I just add one more thing before we take a vote? I just want to thank Bill August, the attorney on behalf of Harwich, and Michael Gaila. I've spent a lot of time conversing with them over the past three years that I feel like I should probably invite them to my family Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Jamie, can I get a motion from the board on this?
If we accept the contract as negotiated.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the contract as negotiated. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, Joe 4-0.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, there are three originals going around for signature.
Thank you. Before I open the next topic for the gentleman in the back, there is a few seats up front if you want to sit. So the next, next agenda item is annual presentation from the Caleb Chase Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee, members of the board. I'm here today to address.
Just state your name for the record.
Uh, my name is Paul Doan.
Thank you, Paul.
And I chair the Caleb Chase Trustees. I'm pleased to have one of my fellow Doans here. Robert Doan, who also is a trustee. You have to be a Doan to be a trustee. And we appreciate very much being appointed periodically by the town moderator, Mr. Ford. I'm here just to kind of summarize and answer any questions, or any questions that maybe Bob wants to answer about the fund. I'm pleased to report that fund is doing exceptionally well. And interestingly enough, I hadn't noticed this before, but I noticed recently that in Caleb Chase's will, in which he established this fund back in 1899, just before his death in 1908, he gave money to the town of Dennis, as well as the town of Harwich, which I hadn't realized before. And so I was over at the Dennis Town Hall the other day and stopped in to see how the Caleb Chase Fund is being operated by the Dennis Town. And, and it was interesting that they have a substantially different approach that they've taken. But I'm happy to report that while they had about $30,000 in their account, which is largely subsidized by tax donations really from, from residents, this fund doesn't rely on that and is now approaching $625,000 in corpus, in the value of the fund. So from that, we produce about $15,000 a year in income, and of course generate a substantial amount of capital gains in the account as well. The fund is managed by the trustees, and we deal with the various policies, establish them as to who is eligible and under what circumstances people are eligible to receive various grants from the Caleb Chase Fund. The original grant was, or the establishment of the fund was to basically provide $10,000 in his will to support the poor in Harwich, as he phrased it. And we've continued with a very, I think, successful program, which is basically monitored by, and the provisions of qualifying applicants and so forth, is all done by the Council on Aging, they do a terrific job and are very helpful along with our town accountant in terms of offering suggestions to the trustees. The other member of the Board of Trustees actually isn't a Doan, he's Jim Stinson, an attorney in town, and he's not able to be here this evening. But I did want to point out for the board's information that back over a year ago, when the COVID situation began to accelerate and become more and more of an obvious concern, the trustees moved quickly to expand several features of the program. Among those were establishing a much broader category of authorized financial assistance to various, different forms of applicants. Previously, the fund had almost been exclusively to help people with utility bill payments. We expanded that to include housing area, rental assistance, car loans, healthcare services, daycare services, winter clothing program for children. We also expanded the amount of grant during this COVID period from $800 was the maximum grant to $1,000. We also expanded it such that you didn't have, were only previously limited to only applying for it once every three years. We removed the requirement entirely, so you could return as often as need. And we also broadened the financial provisions that originally said 60% of the average meeting income as determined by the Fuel Assistance Program here in the Commonwealth. We used to have, if you qualified on an income level, you couldn't have more than 60% of the state average. We increased that to 80% of the state average. So that's resulted in a tripling really of the amount of demand and the grants that have been paid out during this past fiscal year ended July 1. We originally put the provisions in place to run through July 1, and then we would reconsider whether they should be extended, and we did meet on July 1 to consider that and have extended those provisions for another year, subject to periodic review. So those will be in place for the foreseeable future, and we hope to be able to continue to meet the needs of town residents. I guess that probably concludes my formal comments. Just to remind that when Colonel Chase left this testamentary gift 120-so years ago, the provision that he allowed in his will was $10,000, which translates to about $200,000 in today's value. But I, I've estimated, I've served on the boards and so as Board of Trustees since the late 80s, so it's 35 years or so. It's time somebody else sort of moved into the position, I'm sure, but I'll hang in here, at least through this term. I enjoy the work, we do set up our own investment policy, and we do our own investing, and it's proved to be a very successful effort. But one thing I wanted to mention was that in Colonel Chase's, the gifts he made, I estimate that the fund has probably served the town by distributing something in the vicinity of $300,000 to $500,000 to residents over that period. And the fund has actually, as I said, grown from $10,000 to $600,000. So you can see the value of compounding and capital gains that occur with this, and I think it's, continues to be a very successful program, and we're proud to serve as the Board of Trustees. So that concludes my comments, if there are any questions. If not, appreciate the chance to make this report.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you, committee. Go to questions from the board, Mary?
I'm just curious, are you able to, anyone who comes to you, are you able to help them? Or do you sometimes have too many requests and turn some away?
Well, I think the answer is we're able to help anybody that qualifies financially. We try to, again, be as accommodating. One of the provisions that we've been pretty strident about maintaining is the provision that we pay the vendor or the provider of the service, we don't give the money directly to the grantee, so-called. However, we're now finding with our expanded range of eligible grants that some of those categories do not lend themselves to having run through an administrative process, screening by the Council on Aging, recommendations of the Board of Selectmen, payment by the town accountant for the grant, and so forth. That can take two, three months in some cases for it to work through the process. And some of the areas that we've approved, such as with car loans, daycare payments, and now we find medical in particular is a problem. If somebody needs to get dental work or copays or something, they require at the point of service to be paid. So we're working with Carol and we're working with Emily at the council to try to see if we can come up with a system that maintains the integrity of the system, so that the money still is managed very carefully in terms of the money going out to grantees. But it may be that we'll need to modify things slightly in these unique cases where the vendor, the provider of the service, isn't able to sort of have a system where they can wait two or three months for the reimbursement of the payment. So that's the one area that's proving to be a little bit of a glitch for us, given this expanded range of allowed grants.
Thank you, that's a great service.
Great, thank you, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just a broad statement, but you measure a town based on how it treats its less fortunate. And the heritage that Harwich has is remarkable, I'm proud to live here. And all the activities that you've proceeded to do through the years, I just want to know though, are you willing to take on a Nickerson as your replacement, or?
No, we'd never go that far.
Thank you. Larry, any comments?
No, just thank you, Paul, and thank you, committee.
Thank you, Paul.
My pleasure, yeah, thanks.
Consent agenda, Mary?
Oh. I move that we vote to approve the consent agenda, which has two items. One is to approve the Caleb Chase request in the amount of $1,000. And the second is to accept the gift of Ace Watchdog Hardware for the police department.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm an aye. 4-0, Jim? New business, discussion and possible vote to support the local initiative program for Chloe's Path Affordable Housing Development. Andrew?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before you recognize Attorney Singer, it might be helpful for everyone here present and those that are watching, and I know Attorney Singer will get into it, but this is the first of what will be many meetings involving Attorney Singer, his group, and the developers as it relates to the town of Harwich. The discussion this evening starts on the question of whether the Board of Selectmen asking on behalf of the town which to support a local initiative program, lovingly referred to as LIP, so you'll hear that acronym quite a bit. But I also want to emphasize that we, the town, have heard from a number of residents, some of who participated in the developers' community engagement effort, and the board will remember that you allowed me to make reference to that because it was the developer and the attorney's meeting, it was not the town's meeting. And that is to say that the town's absence last week is not indicative of support or denial of the project, rather it was giving the attorney and the developers their space to make their, their presentation to the community. This evening begins in a more formal way for the town through the Board of Selectmen, and you'll see in your packet various department heads relating to either departments or regulatory bodies that the town represents for comments that were provided. You also have in your packet any comments that were, that were provided to administration from the general public, and to the general public, I would say that we will continue to pass on to the board any comments that arise that have been sent in prior to this, that will be sent in as a result of this and going forward. And so I just want to make sure that that's out there before the presentation begins.
Attorney Singer, I'll let you start.
Thank you, and if I might hand out, as I'd emailed it in, but I just wanted to have copies, and I have extra copies for the public.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew. Got it. The rest you could put on the back table for them to pick up if they're interested.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Andrew Singer, I'm an attorney in Dennisport here on behalf of this proposal for a proposed LIP Local Initiative Program, Affordable Mixed Income Housing Project on Chloe's Path. With me in the audience is the, so you know who is here in case there are questions later, I know you have a full agenda, so we will be as quick as we can. Gary Terry and Peter Donovan, who are here, they are the property owner. Brian Bush and Jeff Bush, who are the proposed project developer partner, are here. We also have Kurt Raber and Yanni Maharis from Catalyst Architects, who are here as well. What we propose tonight, and this is a presentation, and I will, and it's in the, what I just handed to you and we submitted out, there is kind of on the first page and a half is an outline of the, the topic points, and then the remaining pages are a more in-depth discussion. After I present what and why we're here. After I present what and why we're here, if you want, we had prepared to, Mr. Raiber was to show you the plans, preliminary plans, because this is a concept-level meeting, but we're happy to do that as well, and we're happy to answer questions. As was stated, and as I know you know, this is a proposal for the land that doesn't come through as well on that screen, but I know we submitted copies of the aerial, it is the land that is highlighted on the aerial that is on the screen here. What I'd like to start out, the project itself, I'm going to be very brief on what the concept project is, because Mr. Raiber will go through some more of that, but also it's not the ultimate main focus of what we're here for this evening, since this isn't a public hearing. We actually haven't filed an application with the state yet to begin the process, because as a LIP, as I'll discuss later, without your endorsement of the concept, we can't file the application. So everything here tonight is a presentation that would start what hopefully will be a productive, but a month-long process. The project as a nutshell is to construct two buildings on the property, apartment buildings, these are, as a rental community, there would be a total of 96 units, there'd be 48 units in each building with a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, and in what I handed out, there's much more detail on the parking itself, the units, the parking, the wastewater, the screening, all the issues that will come up during a public hearing process in which Mr. Raiber will address some of them, and I will address some as well. As a threshold matter, we all know that there's a crisis of housing on Cape Cod. Housing stock is priced out of reach for most, and the inventory of year-round rentals is very underprovided. There are no end of news stories locally out of Boston on television, radio about this. Governor Baker, in fact, was in Falmouth for a housing roundtable just last week, and he was quoted as saying, "Almost every survey, every study I've seen for the last five or six years says the single thing that makes Massachusetts an expensive place to live, more than anything else, is the cost of housing." And maybe even more importantly, at that same roundtable, the head of the Housing Assistance Corporation made this statement, "There are literally no rentals. We have less than a 1% vacancy of rentals on the Cape year-round." I mean, we have a crisis here. And I know it's actually one that you know of very well, because, and I put links to these in the supplemental I just gave you, you've been actively involved in it. There's the Harwich Housing Production Plan, there is the Affordable Housing Trust, there's a local comprehensive plan. Every single one of those talks about the need for housing, and particularly rental housing. You actually, and I didn't know this till I actually checked, I saw online in a news article, you earmarked some money for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund earlier this year to help develop housing. And the town, through the trust, just bought a piece of land within the last month, which I noted, to hopefully develop affordable housing on in the future as well. The most recent update to the Harwich Housing Production Plan calls for 80% of the new affordable housing in town to be rental-based. And Chloe's Path Apartments is going to do that, because it's going to be all rental-based and all was desperately needed. We are going to be seeking 40B comprehensive permit approval from the planning, from the Board of Appeals, because that's what all 40Bs have to get as the operative permit in order to be able to work. However, how we get to the Board of Appeals is what's different about this proposal before you. A more traditional 40B, the Board of Selectmen actually plays no formal role in the process. An applicant submits an application to DHCD and Mass Housing seeking to obtain a project eligibility letter, and with that project eligibility letter, you can then apply to the Board of Appeals for your comprehensive permit. That's what begins the public hearing process. With a LIP, and I gave you a link to the LIP regulations as well, the process is quite different. The LIP Local Initiative Program came into effect in 1990, and it is known, as Mr. Powers mentioned, friendly 40Bs. And the reason why it has that name is because there's more input at the local level, and particularly, you all, the Board of Selectmen, not only have a formal role to play in the process, you actually have the first critical role to play in the process. Because after we present, after you've listened to everything, after you've asked any questions and discussed and thought about the project, if you do not, in your discretion, ultimately choose to support the proposal as a LIP, the LIP itself can't go forward, and we have to go back to the drawing board on options. But what the applicant would like to do is to pursue this as a LIP, and that's exactly why we're here this evening before you. Under a LIP, as with a traditional, more traditional 40B, you do not issue a comprehensive permit, you do not approve plans, you do not review and vote on the design, the scope, the project, and the conditions. However, you have a key role to play in when you're looking at whether or not you're willing to endorse the proposal as to all of those issues, which I'll discuss, and how that happens under a LIP. As the town administrator mentioned, at the encouragement of town administration, the applicant has been conducting a preliminary pre-filing outreach to the town and the community. And we began this a few months ago, we met by Zoom with you very, very briefly, just to say, hey, there's a proposal that's potentially in the works. We had an informal meeting with department heads, which included Public Safety, DPW, Engineering, and others, to again, present the same plans we have this evening and to hear initial feedback, and we had some excellent feedback, in particular from Police and Fire Department, who happened to be a direct butter on the south side. And then last week, we had, we invited, and you announced it in the newspaper announcement as well, and we thank you in the paper for that, we invited neighbors and anyone who was interested to a community forum, so that we could make the same presentation of plans and answer questions. And it was a good meeting, there were over 20 people from the community, neighbors and others more broadly who came. There were some very good questions, and you'll hear me talk about some of the ones that came up that we're looking forward to following up on if we get to the public hearing process. What I would, oh, and you also know, the draft, a copy of the draft application for the LIP is up on the town's website. So we've been trying to be very open, very clear about what is being sought, what will be being sought, and how the process moves forward, because with 40B, as many of you know, it's an incredibly complex process, and it's one that we're trying to, and we want to work through the steps in a methodical and appropriate manner. Why affordable housing, you know, we have the need, but why do towns look towards it? And why do we have 40B? Under 40B, which was adopted in 1969, the Commonwealth has set a goal of every town having 10% minimum of its year-round housing stock to be affordable. And as of December 21 of last year, Harwich's percentage was 5.4%, 333 units. And these are based on numbers that the state maintains, and they change each year. Chloe's Path Apartments is proposed to be 96 total units. Because of how the 40B law regulates and deals with rental apartments, all 96 apartments would ultimately count towards the town's state subsidized housing inventory. That would raise the town's percentage of affordable year-round housing stock units to 7%. That, and that's not a static number, you know, things changed or other projects as well, but a 2-point, a 1.6% increase if this project ultimately gets approved, not only is a phenomenal increase in affordable housing stock in Harwich, but it also does something very key for the town and for you under 40B. There is something called a safe harbor provision, and that, and there are several, but the one that's relevant here is that if a town increases its housing stock by either 5%, a half a percent or 1% in a given year, you get certain protections under 40B. And what the protections are is that a town could say no, if there's a 40B that comes in in a location that is not as desirable. Normally, under 40B, an applicant, if they're denied, would go to the state for an appeal, and most often would be approved at the state level. If the safe harbor is in play, and if you have, if you increase your affordable housing stock in town by half a percent in a given year, you get a one-year safe harbor, if you do it by more than 1%, you get a two-year safe harbor. So effectively, if Chloe's Path Apartments ultimately gets approved, the town will have a two-year period in which you, meaning the Board of Appeals, could say no to a 40B project if it happens to be on a site that is not as desirable as some other sites. And that's, in addition to you having a formal role as the selectman, excuse me, and in addition to having more local input on these projects, the safe harbor is another very key aspect of what this project would do. Whether, by the way, the safe harbor would kick in whether this was a LIP or not. If it's a 40B, it kicks in, but as a LIP, that is another thing that we are submitting to the town. This project by itself is not going to solve the problem, but we do believe it would go a long way towards helping the problem. The owners have partnered with a strong developer who has decades of experience in the rental housing industry, and I just gave you a link to their website in the letter as well. Heritage Properties and its affiliates own and manage more than 2,600 rental apartments, with more than 96% of those being in New England, Massachusetts, Maine, New Hampshire, and Rhode Island. I also provide it, although it's not necessarily key, and I know you're busy, so I won't go into it in detail, but some of the connections of the Bush family, which are Heritage Properties, to Cape Cod, and interestingly even to Harwich, I thought that was really interesting when I learned it. One of the benefits of the outreach that we've been trying to do, both to the town and to the community, excuse me, is that we can hear issues that are out there, and it's also a chance to listen and share comments and questions. With, if you ultimately, and we're going to ask you to at some point, if you ultimately do support the concept of the LIP, you do two things. You would issue a letter, which would be to the state saying, "We hereby, you know, endorse the concept of affordable housing on this property, but we have some questions and issues, item areas we'd like you to look at, and I'd like to talk about those a little bit." And then ultimately, as I mentioned, you actually have to sign the application along with the applicant, then we can legally provide it to the Commonwealth. Once we, and I'm going to be optimistic here and hope that you're going to ultimately sign it, so once we submit that signed application to the Commonwealth, they begin the project eligibility letter review. It's going to take three or four months. And so we wouldn't anticipate being, having that letter and being, going to the Board of Appeals and the Local Conservation Commission for certain buffers until the very end of the year, because it's just the process takes a while to kick through. But that's why we're here this evening before you, because if the project is able to move forward, we'd like to get the application up to the state just as soon as possible, because it is a three- or four-month process. Some of the issue areas that we have heard through talking to you, the town department heads, and the neighbors, which we would actually encourage to be in a letter of support, so that the state knows what we're looking at as well, there are a number of them, but the big one that we heard from everybody was traffic, and questions about what any impacts will be on Sisson Road and up at the various intersections north and south. We have already pre-engaged VHB, Traffic Engineers, who you are very familiar with, to conduct a traffic review if we move forward towards the public process, public hearing process, so that we can, you know, analyze that and look at that for the site. We have also been focusing, and we will focus additional efforts on wastewater, stormwater, landscaping, screening, lighting, architectural design, a bus stop, and a crosswalk at Sisson Road, and you'll see that on the plans. You know, one of the gentlemen, one of the neighbors had, a couple of them had concerns about headlights and screening, and that's something in lighting we'll definitely be looking at. And in addition, during, there have been different, different projects have been looked at this property over the years. Right now, it is a seven-lot house subdivision that was approved a few years ago. I believe a couple of years ago, another potential developer came and spoke with the town about affordable housing on the land, but that just never moved forward. But as part of the most recent proposal, which was the subdivision on the plan, there was, a part of the land is mapped under the Massachusetts Endangered Species Program, and so a deed restriction was put into place covering part of the property. So the property had lots, had building envelopes, and it had land that was to be protected around the building envelopes. This proposal, as you'll see on the plans, changes where the buildings would be, from houses to the apartments, and so we will need to go back to the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program and seek an amendment to that deed restriction. And preliminary conversations have been had with MISA, and we believe that through a subsequent review process with them, that we can amend the deed restriction land, which they just, it would be relocated on the property to again, serve the benefits and the proposals of why it was imposed even in the first place. Again, that is something that we would do in conjunction with the public hearing process, because if we're moving forward, a traffic review, going to MISA, finalizing the plans, looking into how the town is further following up with wastewater, which is a very big issue, those are all things that we want to look at. We have had conversations about wastewater in particular, and since I know you have an agenda item later, I would just mention that while this proposal at the moment is preliminarily proposing an amphidrome wastewater treatment plant for the property that would handle and treat all of the effluent for the site, it's also being structured in a way that it can be easily connected up to town sewer. And we're hoping, you know, ultimately, you know, that as the town proceeds with the wastewater build-out, that, you know, Sisson Road, I know, is, you know, one of the roads, prime roads that is on that, and the village is on that plan, hopefully this site will be able to connect up to that. Either way, it's, the site's going to be dealing with nitrogen, which is such a big issue for the Cape, either through the amphidrome system, through a groundwater discharge permit with the state, or through connecting up to the sewer, or a combination of one following the other eventually. The legal standard of review that the Board of Appeals will ultimately look at is whether a project is consistent with local needs and whether it is economic as ultimately conditioned. Those are the two levels of review that a Board of Appeals looks at under the 40B regulations. This requires a balancing, and it's, there are always competing issue areas in 40Bs. I've done more than a dozen of them, and I've not had one that didn't engender passions on both sides. It's just, you can't satisfy everybody, and there's always going to be questions that we can't completely answer, but we always try to resolve them and meet that balancing test that the state has as best we can. And that's something that we do with the Board of Appeals and have repeatedly done, and I've also never seen a Board of Appeals comprehensive permit decision I've been involved with that didn't have somewhere around six to nine pages of conditions. And so, again, they're very thorough decisions, if we get that far, to have the project. In this case, the proponents of Chloe's Path Apartments respectfully submit that this is a great site for affordable housing. It is on a main road, it's within walking distance to the village and to Town Hall, the library, stores, it's walkable, although it's a bit of a longer walk, down Sisson Road toward, closer towards 28. There is a sidewalk all the way up Sisson Road, from 28 all the way up to the town village, and that's wonderful, that's there. Needs a crosswalk, because it happens to be on the other side of the street, but it is something that is there, and it is something that makes this a very well-centered site for affordable housing. It's very near the public safety and town buildings, you have the community center across the street, you'd be hard-pressed to get closer to public safety buildings in town than this project site. And as I mentioned, we think it's very well situated for future sewer connection. We're asking you to support the local initiative program for this Chloe's Path Apartments, to issue a written endorsement of the concept of affordable housing on the land, and to sign the LIP application. In this way, we would then move forward for formal review through the state, and then coming back to the Board of Appeals. With that, if there's time on your agenda, Mr. Raiber would be happy to go through very quickly the plans, and then any of us who are here would be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Joe?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just to follow up and to emphasize that what you have on your agenda this evening was listed as discussion and possible vote by the board to endorse the LIP. However, that is not what we're recommending this evening. The purpose of this was for Attorney Singer and his team to present, for the board to start collecting, as you see in your packet, comments that have been provided by staff from members. And so, I would contemplate that the board would have this at a future meeting, and also ask the board, as you hear the discussion tonight, if there's additional research or input that you want from any town departments, I can certainly make sure that we do that between this evening and when you decide to bring back the LIP for consideration.
Thank you.
And if I might, this is Mr. Reber starts. While I always hope for a vote the night I first come into a planning board or the Board of Appeals, and the boards know that, I also am not at all surprised at what Mr. Powers just said, and we fully anticipated that at the end of the evening, you'd be continuing us to another meeting. So, that is not something we didn't anticipate.
Thank you for anticipating. Before we get on to the site plan and the plans, does the board see a need to go through the plans again, or do we want to get into conversation first? We've all seen the plans. We've been presented the plans.
They're on the boards over there as well.
Plans are on the boards, plans are in our packet for the public to view. So, Don, I'll start with you. Do you want to see this presentation again?
No, but I do want to make a comment about something that Andrew said.
Well, we'll get to that. I just want to do away with the process of watching this again or not, and then get right into board delivery or conversation. Is it related to the presentation?
Kind of.
Go ahead.
He alluded to the fact there was another project that was actually out there. Just for the record, the trust itself was never involved in that. It was solely the chair of the trust who seemed to understand that this was out there.
Okay. Thank you. Mary, do you want to see the presentation?
I do not. I've looked at it several times. Thank you.
I'm comfortable moving ahead and getting into the discussion.
So, I think we'll get into comments from the board first, and then I'll take limited comments from the public.
I'll be fine.
Why don't we start with Mary?
I'll start with, I applaud you coming forward with affordable housing. I think it is probably one of the biggest issues, not just in Harwich, but here on the Cape. So, I'm a recent selectman, and it was one of the things I talked about when I was running. And we've talked a lot about affordable housing, but I think we need to start doing some affordable housing. So, that's my persuasion. I do have some concerns. You know, it's a long time since I've rented an apartment, but those prices for even affordable looked really high to me. 1363 for a one-bedroom, that just seemed like a lot of money to me, and that's the affordable, never mind market rate. But I trust that there's somebody in the crowd here who knows those rates better than My other concern is, I hear that the most successful complexes such as this is when there is an onsite manager. So, I would be interested to know if we would have an onsite manager.
Okay.
And I think that's it for now, but I applaud your efforts.
Would you like us to answer as the questions come?
We address individually, so we don't lose anything.
Sure, absolutely. As far as the prices, and again, these are now, we're looking two years out, you know, because even when a project gets approved, they're down. And what I can tell you is, for the affordable prices, those are pegged to prices and guidelines that come out from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the region that we're in, with the metropolitan statistical area that the Cape is in. And so, whatever the prices are authorized for at the time that a project actually goes online, is what ultimately would be able to be charged and will be complying with all of them. There is a lottery, like with all 40Bs, there'll be a lottery process to vet the tenants for the affordable units, the 24 affordable deed restricted units, and it'd be a local preference for the first run through that lottery process. And then the market rate units, which are the 72 units, while they are market rate, we don't know what that market will be in two years, although we all know what the market is like at the moment, they are still providing needed housing, because there are so many people who can't, there are a lot, this project's been heavily, through a market study that the applicants conducted, weighted towards one-bedrooms, because there are a lot of single people who need a place to stay, whether it's deed restricted or not. And so, all of those prices, you know, the affordable prices will match the law, whatever is allowed and authorized by the federal government and the state, and the market rate will be what the market rate would be, because the market rate is what helps pay for the affordables, obviously, in a project like this. As far as an onsite manager, the answer is yes. There's going to be one, or I believe, two people onsite from like nine to five.
Two full-time.
Yeah, two full-time staff, nine to five during the weekdays, 24/7 availability for not only management, but also maintenance.
Thank you.
Andrew, can you just clarify the lottery for me? The lottery program, they submit their application. Harwich residents get first option, or is it Cape Cod, state? How does that work?
Under, you have to have a lottery agent, you know, so you work with, whether it's a housing authority or another group. And when they're running the lottery, what the state allows an applicant to do, actually, let me back up. What a state allows a Board of Appeals to condition in their comprehensive permit is that in the first lottery out, so you're just ramping up, you've got 24 units ready to go, and they allow you to require a maximum of a 70% local option, which means if you have more than 70% of the applicants who qualify, because you have to otherwise qualify, are local residents, then they get, Harwich, I mean Harwich residents, then they get those units if they otherwise qualify. If there are more, if everyone who applies is a Harwich resident, well, obviously, some get them, some don't. If fewer than 70% Harwich residents, but you have a lot from Brewster, Chatham, you know, Eastham, Yarmouth, wherever it might be, or anywhere on the Cape, or wherever it is, you can't discriminate on who's coming in. All you can do is who qualifies. Someone has to qualify under the income limitations for the affordable units, and under the market rate, you have to qualify, be creditworthy, and otherwise be able to be, you know, rentable in the facility. After the first lottery, so you have your 24 all filled out, and let's say you have many local people, Harwich people, because they're all local, but Harwich people, you know, for the lottery, that doesn't, it's our understanding, continue after that. So, when a unit comes open, because someone moves, someone's income goes too high and they no longer qualify, then it goes into the regular lottery pool. It is my understanding that, you know, most every town has a big waiting list of people who need, local, Harwich in this case, or whatever town you're in, residents who need the housing. So, I hope that answers the question.
It does. Did you have a follow-up, Mary?
Nope, I'm all set. Thank you.
Larry?
Thanks again. I agree with Mary on the sentiment and the question. Can you help me understand what our role is on this? You say that we have a, we approve a concept, and then goes to the Board of Appeals for details. Now, what, does a concept, it's a general concept, and the Board of Appeals, do they then have the option of saying, "Three stories is too high, we would approve, but only two stories"?
Okay.
Is that part of the what, you know, the what-if? I'm trying to figure out what a concept is versus what actually would take place.
Sure. That's a good question, and a similar, if, proper answer, a similar question came up last week at a meeting with the neighbors about how the 40B process works. You know, I've said concept in what, because what it is, is your endorsement, your support of the LIP application is saying that we support affordable housing on this property. That's what it says. And we have a project now that's been submitted. The Board of Appeals can look at the project. The Board of Appeals can condition the project. What the Board of Appeals can't do, well, the Board of Appeals can do anything it wants, but what could be subject to appeal is if a condition, for example, makes a project uneconomic. So, for example, and this is the exact example I used with the neighbors last week, we've applied for 96 units in this property. The Board of Appeals says, "We're going to approve it, but we're only approving 50% of those units." They can do that. That'll be a condition. The applicant would appeal, because it would render the project uneconomic to build at that point. And presumably, this, because the town's still not at the 10%, presumably that appeal would be upheld at the state level. But it's the Board of Appeals that provides those conditions, you know, a condition about the crosswalk, condition about local preference, condition about waivers for height, you know, for three stories, for example. One of the things I didn't mention, but you can see on the various plans you have seen, is given the topography, and we did, there are many perspectives that are here up on the board and that you've seen and that are online, even though it's a three-story building, it is very close in size to a bunch of the public buildings that are in the vicinity, because there are, happen to be a lot of larger buildings in the area, and you're almost not going to see it except for the top parts of the third floor, when you're either on Sisson Road or Forest Road. And so, we think there's a lot, we think it's very well screened by topography, but yeah, yes, the Board of Appeals can require more parking spaces, for example. Now, in this case, there are parking spaces under the buildings. There's one unit, there's 96 parking spaces under the two buildings, so every unit would have a space underneath, and then there's another 69 spaces spread throughout the site. But there is a part of the property right now that is open, up closer to the street. You know, you could put a playground there, you could put a, more parking there. And so, yeah, the Board of Appeals, because they'd be looking at the plans, saying, "Yeah, you know what? We do think, after looking at the traffic review, that we should have, you know, 10 more parking spaces. We just think there should be some overflow. We have the space to do that." That's what the Board of Appeals would then be looking at. It is not, now you are, and that's why we're happy to have questions and have your input, but it's the Board of Appeals is the decision-maker on the final layout of it. You all would be, are endorsing the concept of it and reflecting any issues or concerns you have. And I mentioned traffic several times, because I think everyone has that question, but if you had other concerns that we haven't mentioned, that you would like the Board of Appeals to be looking at through a public hearing process, you say in your letter, and we also believe that X is something that we would like the Board of Appeals to address, or we'd like the applicant to address it to the Board of Appeals.
Go ahead, Larry.
And who does the economics study? I know, boy, I'm showing, I've been around town too long, but some years ago, we had a 40B project near Muddy Creek.
Okay.
That ended up getting turned down, because in the end, the economics didn't, they couldn't defend their economic position. Is that a third party, or who does that, makes that determination?
Under 40B, that's the state. So, Department of Housing and Community Development, when they're looking at the application, whether it's a LIP or a more traditional 40B subsidy, they look at pro-formas, they look at the numbers. That's actually something that the state has retained within its jurisdiction. They conduct an appraisal. Now, years ago, 20 years ago, when I was before the Harwich Board of Appeals for a 40B, they weren't doing that. So, the applicant still did an appraisal, and we worked with the town, and you got an appraisal, but now that's been consolidated at the state. However, apart from that, the applicant, and I can't remember the name of the company, I know the people behind me could give it to me, they actually had engaged a market study to be done by a well-known company as to what is needed in the area, and that, you know, do we need housing? You know, and they looked at the, you know, the general area for economics and for population, and, you know, what could be supported, what would be supported in the next five-year timeframe? So, it's a five-year window in the market study. And originally, the architect had more two bedrooms and fewer one-bedrooms. Well, the market study said, "No, we think that what's needed in this community," and this community is not just Harwich, it's the mid and lower Cape, is more one-bedrooms with some two bedrooms and some three bedrooms. And so, it was adjusted, and it might be adjusted again in the future, but right now, that is what is at. So, the market study was conducted by the applicant. Any pro forma review is conducted by the state.
Michael, if I may, one.
Go ahead.
One, and Police Chief, I'll point at you, but I cornered a couple of policemen a few days ago and asked about this, and their response is interesting. They weren't concerned about it, per se. They thought the residents might be more concerned with the safety, with the sirens that go off and the announcements. You've given that thought of, you know, it would be like a person moving next to a farm, then complaining that it smells, which I always object to, because the farm is there first, and I wonder if people will come in and say, "Well, it's too noisy. We need to move back here hassling our safety departments."
That actually came up at the department heads meeting. The Fire Department, Police Department asked the exact same question, and so, Mr. Bush had responded to it at that point, because he's the one who manages 2,600 apartments, and the answer was, "It's not an issue. It's a reality." It is, you know, and please correct me if I say this incorrect, but if you look at a more urban area, even having the sirens next door occasionally is still, it's still a quieter area than you otherwise have. And do you want to add anything to that, or is that? Good. This is Mr. Brian Bush.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak. So, I did come up at the meeting there, and my general concern, my general opinion, is that the benefits far outweigh the attractions of something like that. You're not taking a single family home and putting it next to a, to the police and fire station. You have a multi-unit building there, where the noise level's going to be a little bit higher. You'll have people who live above, below you, beside you typically. So, it's, like I said, I think that the benefit outweighs the attraction of having police and fire nearby as opposed to further away, and the noise would be irrelevant to the decision of people to rent there.
Thank you. No more for you, Mike.
And if I might just add something else that Police and Fire had mentioned is, their training, they have a training tower, which is actually very close in the back of their property, and so, it was discussed about new fencing to make sure that their site is secure. And so, that was something that came up at the department heads meeting, and something that engineers and everyone's going to be, you know, if we move forward, you know, working with them on to make sure that, in addition to screening of trees and everything, that there's proper fencing, actually on their site more than our site, just because they have their training, evidence, and a whole bunch of things in the back.
Thank you, Andrew. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't mean to meander, but I'm going to.
You're on that side of the table.
Yeah, I get it. So, you know, growing up, I mean, I get the problem. Growing up, post-Korean War, all my friends lived in Quonset huts or garden apartments, and my parents just barely qualified to be able to get a starter home on a slab with two bedrooms. So, that's not even happening in abundance anymore. But the fact is that the country has a tradition of trying to do something about this issue. In all honesty, disclosure, for the last 23 years, I've been involved in HESH, Harwich Economic Medical Council for Housing, and I really do care about housing. Now, I'm going to bring a couple of negatives up first, and these are just general negatives. Everybody has to ponder this. Statistical numbers don't mean a whole hell of a lot to me. I have a real problem with getting 100% credit for not 100% affordable units, because that's not getting somebody into an apartment. By the way, removing previously designated year-round residents actually gives you the unanticipated consequence of us barreling towards our 10% goal by deleting those houses as part of the equation, and that's not getting anybody any real help either. This is a state issue. Most of my issues are with the state, because I'm not sure that they're helping this issue that much. So, when you strip it all away, forgetting about this particular project, my own overall belief structure is, you have to ask two questions. Where are you going to put something, and who's it going to help? Because the numbers are completely irrelevant, they can be cooked, they can be moved around, and I'm really hoping to get the right answers out of this, whether it's environmentally sensitive or not particularly, because there have been concerns raised by that, and I want to make sure that we listen to the public as we flesh this out. As you alluded to, there are several other things that are going on in town. It's not like we're just waiting for this one thing to occur. And I do recognize the process is wrong when HESH and Habitat were engaged in West Harwich, and you were there. That took more than two years to be able to resolve that situation, and it's shame on us, because that wasn't sensitive. And there's always going to be blowback, but the real question is, where is it, and who's it going to help? And I want to make sure that when somebody steps across the threshold and they got a roof above them, that it's the people we're trying to help that have that happen, and it's not the builders particularly, just as a summary statement. I am, as my opening shot, concerned that, especially with 75% non-affordable, just market rate units, in this kind of environment, with people playing games with things, how are you going to assure that somebody's not going to try to sublet or use it as an investment opportunity to re-rent?
I can, I want to answer that question. Good question. It's something, again, that's come up as well. The, it's prohibited by the lease. The operator, and we, and they addressed this last week as well, they do not allow sublets, they do not allow Airbnb. They typically have one-year leases or longer, occasionally with, they might have a six-month. with, they might have a six-month, but they don't do anything shorter, and, and usually they're a year to a year and a half, I think, was what Mr. Bush had said. So, there are no sublets allowed, if someone was doing that, they're violating the lease.
How would that get adjudicated? Because, I mean, let's, let's be real, if you go to Boston, if you go to New York, the, the streets are littered with people who are flouting that provision, so you find somebody that has that happen, then what? Let's process. How do you remove them?
I turned my head and I asked Mr. Bush to respond. Because I can't answer that, but you can.
So, thank you. So, you would file a, a motion in the housing court for violation of the lease, and it would be very easily upheld by the courts, that that person would be evicted, no longer able to sublet their unit.
That's my concern, because that endpoint is not fast.
Actually, it would go fairly quickly. There's, it would happen within, depending on the cycle of housing court on Barnstable, it would be between six and eight weeks.
That's all.
That's it. Andrew, I've got a lot of questions, which you're probably going to want in an email, but we'll start with-
You can follow up after.
Thank you. The, the original proposal that you put forward in the, in the board's side, does this proposal, as it stands now, differ at all from the original proposal with the feedback that you were given from department heads, town administrator, and the public?
The plans have not been changed, they were, the floor plans were revised, so the number of one bedrooms, two bedrooms was revised, but in order to be consistent from when we first met you to tonight, we made a decision to, and that's why we spent many months working on the plans, to not make the changes, so that what everyone's seen, they're all apples to apples right now, except for the floor plan layouts.
So, we'll get back to that. The difference between LIP slash friendly forty-B versus a regular forty-B, what's the difference, besides the board not signing the application that you're asking us to sign?
That, that's the principal difference. That, that is that the, that there's more input and discussion, for example, this meeting, you know, that you wouldn't normally have, and, and a chance to address those concerns and hear them. Normally, we, or not we, but normally, under a forty-B, this meeting wouldn't happen, and so we might not hear the, the various comments and questions that you have. So, it's really a chance, and this is why LIP was, and they note this in the literature I gave you, it's why I think LIP was put in place, so that, so that local communities, leadership of local communities, could have more involvement, more input.
Thank you. How many acres is the total parcel?
The partial, part of the land upon which the proposal is located is nine, is about nine and a half, point two-nine acres. Now, there, oh, can you go back to that?
I can maybe make this question, the answer shorter, Andrew, is it nine point nine plus the three point seven-five-ish?
Yes, it was originally thirteen or so, it was twelve thirteen originally, and then the, the hatched area, the three-point, whatever it is, was previously deeded to the town.
Okay, so, so where, where you mentioned in the application nine point two-nine, that's an accurate statement as to what you can-
It's what's left, yes.
The, you know, a lot of questions. Find myself in a conundrum. You're asking us to support an application that's very detailed. We've gotten administrator feedback, we've gotten department head feedback, we've gotten resident feedback from the one meeting that we've had, but you're asking us to support an application based on a building that's three floors, has a hundred and fifty-six parking spaces, with a landscape plan to follow, on a site that you're going to have to go back before MESA and NEHESP, because it's not buildable on that footprint right now, so you haven't gotten that change. So, you're asking the elected body, Board of Selectmen, to endorse an application for a fairly comprehensive ask. You've taken feedback, that ask hasn't changed, and I don't know how I could personally support it, other than to put three or four pages of conditions, based on what the public's saying, based on what the board's saying, based on what the department heads, or have further meetings and discuss the things that the board is against, because if it turns out to be just a forty-B and not a LIP, obviously, at that point, we'll have our right to argue what we think fits in the character of the neighborhood, which is, which is a big part of forty-B. Has to fit in the character of the neighborhood. By no means am I against affordable housing, but the ask for us right now is to endorse something that department heads, board members, and public have said they want to see something different. What, what are your thoughts on that?
The, as far as town department heads, questions and comments that we've heard, and we've agreed to, you know, we're going to meet with the Police Department and work on, you know, fencing, and do a, conduct a traffic review, at the community meeting last week, a gentleman whose house is right across the street from the drive, the existing roads in, you know, was put in a few years ago, a couple of years ago, so, he said, you know, I have a concern about headlights, so Mr. Bush was going to be going over there to talk to him and meet him at some point. We, it's, I understand where you're coming from, you know, in the sense that the application was like eighty pages long, and, and there's a lot of detail into it. The comments, conditions, and, and there were, there were concerns, some of the concerns raised by the neighborhood is, you know, we don't want any housing there, or we don't want that much housing there, or we have, you know, that's where I said, we're never going to have everybody on the same page. We, we can't, we try to address things as best we can, but we're never, no forty-B developer, I think, will ever be able to address every single concern.
That's very universal where we sit-
Yeah.
-on most subjects.
Right. What I, the way I look at this with the LIP, is that if you are endorsing the application, and you'll so note this, I would assume, in your letter, you are not endorsing these site plans, you are not endorsing the final mix of one, two, three bedrooms, you're not endorsing the final parking, whatever it is. You are endorsing the idea of having affordable housing on this property, if and how the Board of Appeals, through the public hearing process, which is where everybody in this room, everybody can, you know, come make their comments, input their testimony, is, that's where the power lies, in the sense of how it's, how it's ultimately voted. So, you are not approving, and I would suggest you make that very clear in a letter, you're not approving the plans. That's why we haven't even gone through them in depth tonight, because, again, we're happy to. But, but as you said, you know, you're looking at the overall issue of having affordable housing to meet the need on this site of land. We can't address the general concern that Don made about how units are counted with for-sale properties versus rentals, that's aspects of state law. We do firmly believe that even market rate rentals are desperately needed, and when you look at Housing Assistant Corporation, quote, you know, rentals are needed, affordable, with a big A, capital A, affordable deed restricted units are desperately needed, but all rentals are needed. I mean, we've, we've had, and my father was involved with it for fifty years, you know, we are the epitome on Cape Cod of the one, two, and three-acre zoning, you know, and the suburbanization, we've been doing that forever. Well, ever is a long statement, my, my lifetime. So, I appreciate where you're coming from, and, and, but even if we met with you, and again, this might not solve your, the concern that you have, but it, but it reflects where we're, where we face as well, is, we could have many, many meetings with you, and we could discuss things with you, none of it's binding on either side, you know, because it's not a public, it's not a public hearing process, you know, we haven't filed an application yet. We could just go straight through, you know, if the board ultimately said, look, we want you to go do a regular, traditional forty-B and just go apply to DHCD, all right, that's an answer, and, and we would go do that, still hopefully being as friendly as we can, because that's the goal here. But I would imagine this is something that a Board of Appeals, or, sorry, a Board of Selectmen, in your position, anywhere in any community, three-hundred-and-fifty-odd communities in Massachusetts, would be facing on a LIP, because it's the same thing you'd be looking at. But with appropriate language that you're endorsing affordable housing here, as a site that's within walking distance to the village, near public buildings, near schools, near community buildings, near sidewalks, near public safety, all the things for, you know, so-called smart zoning, smart growth that we hear about, this site touches all the bells for that, because it's, everything is there. You'd be approving that and endorse, not approving, maybe that's the wrong word, you'd be endorsing-
Creative rep. We don't have to agree with this project, but we can agree that we think some of, some sort of affordable housing would be appropriate.
Right, and the Board of Appeals will ultimately be voting on whatever they're going to approve, with or without condition, well, with conditions.
So, we touched on market rents, and I also agree that market rents are extremely high in your proposal, and, and I don't see how, as we talked to department heads, and people weighed in on teachers, and people being able to afford these apartments, you know, my concern is, we're going to, we're going to develop all but the twenty-four of these apartments, and they're going to be rented from people that aren't going to benefit our community. Have you done a market rate study on this community? I know in Brewster, they just did a forty-B project, and they required, it was also a LIP program, that went very well, but they required a market study, and the developer granted that to them. Are you willing to do a market study ahead of us taking our vote, so that we can take a look at that?
It was completed three months ago.
All right, we don't have, we don't have that yet.
All right, we can, we can get you a copy.
So, I'd like to see the market rate study, or the, the whole board through administration. Traffic impact, thank you for engaging GHD. Again, going forward, that's going to be extremely important, maybe, maybe after the vote, maybe before the vote, but I don't know how quickly you anticipate getting some traffic study.
A traffic review would be done as part of a public hearing, you know, we'd be doing that if, if we move forward towards-
I know you're not required to, but if you've already engaged them, did they give you time?
Well, nothing has been, what I can say, and this came up at the community meeting, because there was, someone said, well, you know, if you don't conduct a study in August, the study's not going to be beneficial, because you're going to miss the summer traffic. Traffic studies account for that, there's, and all the traffic studies through the Cape Cod Commission, I've been involved in all the ones that I've done with the Planning Board, Board of Appeals here in town, and all the towns, they have what's called a seasonal adjustment. So, a traffic review can be done any time of the year, and it's, and it's adjusted to meet for what local conditions are, and in Cape Cod, obviously, our condition is, you know, July fourth, Labor Day principally, with the shoulder season. So, whenever it gets done, would it address those questions? This type of a project, you know, you, you wouldn't, well, from an economic point of view, you know, it's, it's hard to justify spending every single thing you got to do for all these studies, before you know they even have a viable project. And so, they did do the market study to make sure that what we were coming today before you is something that, you know, works and is viable, can be done. Traffic, that's really a nuts and bolts that we would anticipate doing if you ultimately approve, you know, in the few months, you know, before, while the DHCD is doing their review.
Okay. Is it your intention to have any more community engagement before, before you move forward, before the board endorses, or you, you've had your one, you're reading the letters, are you planning on any more community involvement prior to any vote from the board?
We were not planning any additional meetings at this point, however, you know, I gave out my cards to everybody and who wanted them at the meeting, and, you know, a neighbor has reached out to me, you know, to this, well, a person in town, not an immediate neighbor, actually, someone reached out to me to talk about it, we've received some of the copies of the letters, maybe not all of them yet, but some of them that have been submitted to the town, so we welcome questions and comments. So, we weren't planning another meeting, but if someone has an additional question or comment, there, I offer them to reach out to me, and I would direct it to the appropriate person if I'm not that person.
Okay. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Being a firm believer and knowing what the left and the right hand are doing, so I'm just throwing this out there, I know you know that HESH has fourteen units to the south of that, that are affordable.
Very familiar with that site.
I'm sure you are. But I also want to make sure that you recognize that the Housing Trust has engaged the Mass Housing Partnership, and is actually developing an RFP for the site that has the, the old wreck building where the Harwich Junior Theater is currently occupying, and that's, the aim in that is eight to ten affordable units, and they're all, and if we have to subsidize, we've already taken a position on the trust that we would, you know, buy down the project to make it sixty, eighty percent, so it would be a hundred percent eligible, so that's another ten potential units to the north of it on the same road. I just want everybody to understand the context of the discussion.
Yeah, yeah. No, and that, that was, those would be good if they come, yeah, that, that property's right up closer to Brooks Academy, and, and, yeah, the one that HESH did, it's, yeah, just very shortly down the road.
But it's real enough where there's actually an RFP being developed, so I just want everybody to understand that.
You might have to do a traffic review.
If you put that in.
Andrew, my other questions are related to the application, so I will send those to you in an email, and then we'll make that part of the public record for the next meeting that we have on this, with what your answers are.
Sure.
But before we get on to the public, it's, the biggest takeaway is the board is being asked to support affordable housing on this site, not this project. So, for the people, people in the audience that are here to speak tonight, certainly, if we, if we can not repeat what everybody else has to say, just say, I agree, and then add whatever you want to add, that would be helpful, and, and that's just as a matter of time. Whether it's a friendly forty-B, LIP program, or a forty-B, these gentlemen aren't all sitting here tonight, because they're not going forward with this, so whether they get our endorsement or not, they're going forward with their forty-B project. The important piece of that is our Board of Appeals, and through the public process, you will all have your time to comment, you will all have your time for your opinions, and, and, and whatever fight you want to make on it, as will the town. So, I just want to make that clear, that we're not trying to approve this project tonight. I, I have read a few things stating that the board is fast-tracking this, and, and other comments related to the board not being at the meeting. I didn't want to be at the meeting, I wanted to make these gentlemen come sit before us and tell us everything that they told you, and have you the opportunity to give us your opinions and emails, and verbally as well, and I think every board member at this table is taking this very seriously. With that, I would open it up to the public, one at a time, and state your name first for the record.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Peter Gory, I'm at two-twenty-six Sisson Road. Being, acknowledging the late hour and the packed agenda, I'll just summarize a few notes. We submitted a letter, I represent at least a dozen neighbors, property owners, director butters, and otherwise, many of us attended the meeting last Tuesday, so thank you all for staying so focused on this, and for your comments and questions, because they are detailed. We won't get into detail tonight, you'll, you may hear from some other neighbors with some localized questions, but we appreciate the sentiment that you, Mr. Chair, and some other members, and Mr. Powers made earlier. What we're asking for right now is a seat at the table. We were not caught unawares fully, we were fully recognized, public advertising of community meetings, but to have a meeting six days prior to even a request for a vote, we just felt was inappropriate and out of sequence, and you've heard that from us in writing. So, we wanted to summarize that again, and, and say, you'll also find that most of us are quite reasonable, we're now very well-informed, and getting more engaged together as a group. We would ask that the staff, particularly Mr. Powers and Megan, and, and the team, and the department heads, maybe engage us, because we have some localized questions and comments that we think we could actually add. We're not against affordable housing at all, we trust and have no reason to, to, to think anything other than, frankly, good intentions of the developers. We don't know about scale, and we don't understand the scale yet. I will take little exception as a professional in the field, Mr. Singer's comment about say traffic, to conduct that in the fall, is actually not accurate, you can't conduct localized traffic intersection studies in off-season and seasonally adjust, you can only do that for highways. That's just a fact, and Mr. Singer can talk to VHB about that, but I have twenty years in the field, so we should, we think, get into and dig into the detail now. The Board of Appeal, we are clear, and we hear you, Chairman, again, that the conditions are set, the conditions are enforced for the Board of Appeal, but this is our elected body, this is our town government, and we ask you to just go in eyes wide open, because you can't unring that bell. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, let me move this down here. My name is Kathy Clobridge, I live at two-twenty-five Sisson, thanks to the select persons for your service to the town. Thank you, Mr. Howell, for the overview of other concurrent projects, very helpful information. I'm just going to represent a concern that a number of us do have about the traffic and the public safety issue. I'll keep it very brief. I, I assume most people in the room experienced the traffic on Friday afternoon, I live on Sisson Road, I'm extremely concerned about the ability of our safety vehicles to get in and out of our public safety building there if we add a project of this scope. I know what the traffic was like on Friday, not, it's not just that the traffic is a horror show, it's that I think it could really be a problem for the town. I do want to say that I do think an analysis should be done during this time of year, and I also think that the public safety resources will obviously be much more greatly drawn upon by a, by a project of this scale. drawn upon by a, by a project of this scale, so I don't really know, you know, what the, what the value is to the town of allowing something this large. I think, you know, we need to look at the return on that and just say, you know, what are all the issues around it, and we're asking really just to do a lot more analysis and to have us involved, and I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I rise, Mike Ford, on behalf of the two closest of butters I'd suggest to the project, Bob and Andrea Doan. I'll try and be brief. Bob is handing out a copy of a letter he put together for the board with some attachments, and I plan to speak to some of the issues that are raised in Bob's letter. I think the most important issue is a threshold issue, and that's the issue of whether this is all premature, and I'd suggest to you respectfully that it is. Why? Because this is a seven-lot subdivision approved by the Town Planning Board, and when they filed their application, they filed a copy of the definitive subdivision plan that was approved, and I was struck by the fact that they only filed the first page. It's a three-page approved plan. The other two pages, which you didn't see, show the areas that are limited from disturbance on the lots. Mr. Singer briefly referred to them this evening as the lot envelopes, where the houses could be built. What can be built on this particular property is not the area where a substantial portion of one of the buildings is located, and perhaps both of the buildings, it's difficult to tell, but clearly, buildings, roads, pathways are all proposed in an area over which the applicant does not have the proper property rights to be before you. Why? Because those areas are currently in an area called a limit of disturbance, where if you read the covenant, which the property owner signed, that runs in perpetuity in favor of fish and wildlife, those areas have to remain absolutely natural, no disturbance whatsoever. And the only way that that can be released is from a release from fish and wildlife acting through the Endangered Species Agency, and their decision is dictated by what's in the best interest of the Endangered Species Act. That's what the covenant says, that's the covenant they signed, they know that's all the property rights they have, so why are they here? It seems to me that they're here because it would be helpful to them in what appears to be what they've referred to as a back-and-forth that they hope to have with the Endangered Species Program about whether they can get a waiver, that they can go and say, "Well, Board of Selectmen has endorsed the concept of affordable housing on this property." Well, I'd suggest to you respectfully that the property that they're referring to with the large buildings is not suitable for affordable housing because they don't have the property rights to apply for it. What should happen here is that you should tell them that you laud their interest in affordable housing, but they don't yet have all the rights that they need to make an application, that they need to go to Mass Fish and Wildlife and see whether a waiver of the forever wild areas, that's what they're called, and Mr. Doan has filed the actual two extra pages of the subdivision plan that you didn't see to show you those areas, and they're purporting to keep the first 50 feet from wetlands no disturbed. Well, the forever wild areas and many of the areas are 150 feet from wetlands, and this is not a permit, this is not something that can be waived at the Board of Appeals, this is not something that the Housing Appeals Committee can waive on an appeal by the applicant, this is not something that a court will overturn. There are decisions by the SJC and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that are very clear that restrictions in the nature of property rights are not fair game in a 40B, they cannot be waived either by the Housing Appeals Committee or the local Board of Appeals. So why are we starting this whole process? Until they're able to show to you that they actually have the right to do the development that they're purporting to have. And I'd suggest it's because they know that it is going to be a negotiation with the Endangered Species Program, that they need all the help they can, and they wanna say that the town's behind it, the town's endorsed it, the selectmen have signed the application, sure, they have problems with height, problems with traffic, they got problems with this, but they've endorsed the concept that this ought to be for affordable housing, and then they can argue it's affordable housing versus the Endangered Species Program. That's backwards. They've got a piece of land that they're able to get seven lots, when the Mass Endangered Species Program allowed the seven lots, they said the seven lots would be a taking of endangered species without a forever wild restriction on large parts of these lots, and they imposed it, and the property owner signed it, and it runs with the land and it's good in perpetuity as to those. The rest of the covenant is good for 30 years. The plan your planning board signed had those areas on it. Bob and Andrea were part of the process, they're mentioned in the covenants, everyone went forward, they knew what the rules were. You can't now come and say, gee, we wanna do this, and don't worry about that, we'll take care of that, that'll be a negotiation somewhere along the way. If you read Mr. Singer's comments, he says that if the Board of Appeals approves the project, well, then we'll apply for the necessary waiver, hoping again that they've got an approval from the town, not only the selectmen, but the Board of Appeals, any other local permits, and then go to endangered species. That's backwards, because they don't have the property rights to pursue this project. So that's issue number one. Issue number two, the covenant with the Mass Endangered Species Program also required, the current property owner, signed by Mr. Donovan, to undertake a turtle management program on a portion of the property that was conveyed to Mr. Doan. Despite repeated requests, it's never been done, he's never done anything he was supposed to do under that covenant. I give that to you because I just want you to realize the folks that are before you in terms of property owners and their record with respect to good stewardship or not of this particular property. Three, the Doans are very concerned about nitrogen loading. The sewer treatment plant that is, they suggest would be one, and I'm sure it wouldn't be approved, it wasn't attenuation for nitrogen, but this is an area where the town now owns the open space in front, which was consideration for the seven lots, maybe 35 people, now we're talking 300 people and 96 units. A treatment plant there would obviously discharge down into that open space, which is an old bog that fills up when the water table's high. As Jimmy Marseline used to say to me when I was a kid, and I've walked Forest Street my whole life, when you walk Forest Street through that area, you see water on both sides, you know what the height of the water table is. Water goes from there, across the grassy pond, then it goes right over into Coal Brook, Andrews River, Sakwatake Harbor. It's an area, we already have a nitrogen attenuation program in, in Coal Brook. Putting all this nitrogen, even if they've treated some, for 300 people in that area? Doesn't make any sense. Again, it goes to the issue of whether the land is suitable for affordable housing, the threshold question that you have to answer. Third thing, and, and this should wait because we're really not at these issues, but three-story buildings with a garage underneath is really a four-story building. I know Mr. Singer said, "You're not gonna see it from Sisson Road because the road goes down." If you walk Forest Street, which I've done my whole life, you know this area when you look to the right, if you're going to the port, or look to the left when you're coming back, coming to the center. The open space is very flat, it's an old bog, then it rises up, there's a plateau where there would be two buildings, both four stories with a garage that look out to Grassy Pond. You're gonna see it, believe me, you're gonna see it, you're gonna see it all the way over to Bank Street. The high density, we've talked about traffic. Finally, let me touch on something that Selectman Howell eloquently touched on, does this really support affordable housing in the town? Bob has been a longtime supporter, Bob Doan of Affordable Housing, he's a director of Mid-Cape Church Homes. 25 percent, 24 units for all the impacts this might have, 24 affordable units, that's what we're talking about with, with the rents that were in there. I really don't think that this is something, given the potential impacts, that really is gonna move the ball in terms of affordable housing. The trust is busy in the area, as Mr. Howell said, 10 units, may, all affordable, may come online in the recreation building area, and we're all very encouraged about the trust purchase of the Marseline property, so it's not as if things aren't happening. I, I know that we've talked a lot more about affordable housing in Harwich than we've acted, but I see a change in that, I see things have started to move, and so I don't think that this project is one that you need to support in order to kind of move the ball with our affordable housing effort. But just to get back, Mr. Chairman, and I think you started to alluded to it in your comments, they're premature. They don't have the property rights necessary to proceed with this project, and unless and until they do, the board should not endorse. And that's what Mr. Singer's application asks, actually asked the board, his own language. Let me quote it so I get it right. "We ask the Board of Selectmen to support the LIP for Chloe's Path Apartments to issue a written endorsement of the concept of affordable housing on this land and to sign, actually signed their application." That's what he's looking for. I don't think they're ready for it, I don't think the board should even consider it, I think it's premature, and thank you for the opportunity to comment, and Bob and Andrea, thank you as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, other members of the board, I need your help. My name is James Walpole, and I'm the joint owner of a single-level residential home located at 214 Sisson Road in Harwich. The driveway, living room, and master bedroom of our home are located directly across the road from Chloe's Path entrance and exit, the only access point for the proposed 96-unit apartment complex. The complex is expected to house as many as 300 people, with an estimated 176 vehicles. In addition, there'll be deliveries by postal, FedEx, UPS, Amazon, school bus traffic, and there's office staff, maintenance workers, landscapers, snow removal, that will all frequent the complex. There's a conservative estimate of 400-plus vehicle movements per day, 200 out, 200 back. When leaving the complex, the vehicles will not have reached optimum operating temperatures. They will accelerate into traffic, adding vehicular, vehicular admissions that are not efficient. In addition to that, there'll be noise and light pollution in the area. The brunt of that pollution will adversely affect my house, my wife, and myself. My wife, Mary, has significant respiratory illness issues, and she may be unable to go out on outdoors due to the pollution increase. It has been suggested that a pedestrian crosswalk may be installed to add to the need for vehicles to stop from either direction, and then accelerate when pedestrian traffic The traffic is further exacerbated by the fact that there is currently no public transportation, and if added, the cultural center should be an off-road planned stop, not Sisson Road. There will be traffic problems in the entire area. You know, people unparalleled, will end up with people going around to be able to access their, that side of the road for them so that they can gain entrance without crossing traffic. You know, that's just one example. Here in Harwich, there is a com, complex of this size, where? Where is there one? Does it fit the plan for the community? In the past, there was a proposal to add approximately seven, and I say this in its incorrect habit for humanity homes, it's just, they were regular homes, so I wanna correct myself because I'll be giving you a copy of that, they were not homes for humanity, habitat for humanity. Habitat for Humanity would be a perfect fit and match the neighborhood and targets the neediest in our community. That would eliminate burdensome traffic, a pollution nightmare from air, light, and noise. The current proposal is unacceptable. Harwich must require that written mitigation plans be included to protect its current and future residents. These plans must be enforceable on any project that's allowed to go forward.
Let me just pause you for one second. Your opinion is very important to this board, this board won't deliberate any of those things, that would be the Board of Appeals, so send it, send it to us in writing, in lieu of how many people are in this room tonight and the length of our agenda, I wanna try and keep comments short.
Okay.
Please.
As I stated at the beginning, I really need your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please get that to the board in writing.
Good evening.
I can pass the room.
My name is Karen Beatty, and I own 195 Sisson Road, I am a direct of butter to this proposed development. I'm a public school teacher, I started my teaching career on Cape in the Montemoy system, and I currently teach for the Noset School District. I'm intimately familiar, having grown up on Cape Cod, I was born in Hyannis, I've grown up here, spent most of my life here, I am intimately familiar with the affordable housing crisis. However, I believe that this proposed development is incredibly disingenuous in its belief that it would help to mitigate that crisis. I also have significant privacy and safety concerns, which I will keep extremely brief since a lot of these have already been touched on. At its current size and scale of 300 people and 96 units, this development poses very real risks to public safety and personal property. When issues were expressed at the July 22nd community meeting, the development team had no data, plans, or answers to mitigate these very real risks, which include what are not limited to no privacy screening or fencing or barriers for direct of butters, no consideration for noise or light pollution from the building or its residents, no consideration of the school drop-off pickup area at the community center on Sisson for Harwich Elementary School, or forethought to overflow foot traffic into the surrounding neighborhoods. I ask the board to not endorse this plan as it currently stands until the developers can provide residents with transparent due diligence on issues of traffic congestion, safety of personal property, privacy and trespass issues, and the safety of Harwich Elementary School students across the street. At three stories tall, this building would tower over the surrounding homes, including the five single-family homes directly abutting the development, mine included. That is 300 people that would have direct sight and if they wanted to, access to private property. This development in its current size and scale is grossly out of step with the surrounding community. While it promises affordable housing, the reality is that only 24 of the 96 units would be considered affordable. This is too little benefit with too much disruption to the community's safety. It is disingenuous to say that this would benefit the town's housing numbers and affordable housing stock when the majority of these at-market rates will be unobtainable to teachers, nurses, landscapers, et cetera, and I can say this with confidence because I am a public school teacher. I appreciate that Mr. Singer has listened to and noted community concerns, I do not believe that this should be endorsed until more data can be provided regarding these concerns, in addition to reconsidering its massive and disruptive scale. Thank you.
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 Good evening. Clara McClarty from East Harwich. I don't live on Sisson Road, obviously, directly next to it, and I also speak for some other members of the Harwich Climate Action Network who couldn't be here tonight because of work. And we don't live right there, but we're really concerned about development across Harwich. I agree with what has been said so far. And I wanted to clarify one thing in the back and forth. Attorney Singer is saying you're being asked to endorse the concept of affordable housing, but I believe you're being asked to endorse the concept of 96 units specifically, which hasn't been made crystal clear. Is that true?
No. And when Attorney Singer and I discuss that, the board can put anything they want in their letter of endorsement if we write a letter to endorse it.
He said...
Their concept plan, if we came back...
He said if we don't, then...
No, no, listen. If we come back and say that we would only endorse 55 units, he said they would appeal that because the project wouldn't be worth it. Attorney Singer?
Could I just, just legally, just clarify? We can't appeal anything you put in a letter because, again, it's not an application. So if you said that, for example, in your letter, then presumably we wouldn't move forward. You wouldn't sign the application.
I meant your appeal to the state afterwards.
Only if the Board of Appeals said that, just to make sure we're all on the same page.
But we don't have to put in writing that we're...
So if you endorse it, you are endorsing a 96-unit project.
It depends on what our letter states.
And...
If we write the letter.
I agree completely with everything that Attorney Ford said about wastewater, and I have looked into wastewater questions a bit. Why are we seeing 40B projects proposed in Harwich when, you know, we didn't in the past? Developers can't even wait till the sewer is functioning. Just knowing it's on the way has got them salivating. We resold this project as an environmental necessity. It's obviously more than that. It's a necessity for continued and higher-density development. Where is the revision of our CWMP? We were going to revise this, and a big part of what I was really hoping to see in the revision is talking about areas like Saquon Tucket watershed, which is where this project is located. In our CWMP, the Saquon Tucket watershed has a 58% removal requirement. That's for nitrogen loading to the saltwater. That's not even talking about phosphorus problems with the grass pond, freshwater. If we add units, and we have been adding units since the time of the CWMP, we are no longer at a 58% removal. It's going up, and it's going up, and that is narrowing down our options. If they have a denitrifying system, the amphidrome wastewater treatment, and if that could reach acceptable levels of nitrogen and phosphorus effluent, then why are we installing sewers? I don't know what numbers they can get down to. I know there are some packet systems and denitrifying systems that can get down to astonishingly low numbers, and those may be an option for Harwich to save a lot of money on sewer infrastructure if we do not overbuild. Once we overbuild, we reach a point where we have to install pipes and we have to pay for the most expensive infrastructure that's out there, and it also becomes obviously harder to avoid more 40B projects. So I think the board needs to consider that, too, because the wastewater element of it hasn't been explained clearly and satisfactory, as far as I can understand, and I've worked hard to try to understand it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to just, just so everybody's aware, I'm cutting this off at 8 o'clock.
Okay, I will...
Brief comments.
My name's Sarah Zussman, and I live on Sisson Road also. And most of my concerns have been discussed here. The environmental stuff is huge. One thing that's come up over and over here that concerns me is every time we talk about scaling this back, because 300 people there is a lot. The impact of three apartment buildings on that piece of land is huge. And Mr. Singer keeps telling us, if he can't have that many, it's not worth doing. If you can't make that property worth developing with less than 100 units, maybe we need to look at a different place to develop it. It doesn't make sense to me that the only way he can make this work financially is to have that many units. It was going to be profitable for somebody with seven houses. Why does it have to be 100?
Thank you.
Dean Ferrioli, 140 Forest Street. Just to make it brief, my property is below that on Forest Street, looking up that embankment that the lawyer had talked about. I am worried about the height of the three stories from the view of my house and the effect on the conservation land. Right now, I have to wait to fertilize my lawn at certain times of year because of the nitrogen, and now, all of a sudden, we're going to flood that area with something else. So that's my concern. Thank you. I hope you vote against it.
Thank you.
The idea of... My name's Sandy McClarty, 210 Pleasant Bay Road.
And just a disclaimer, let's keep this about what we're here for tonight, not water around town.
I wish I could believe in forever wild areas. They keep getting destroyed. The Saquon Tucket Harbor watershed, which I believe this is in, the actual number for that plume, or whatever you call it, is 72.95%. That's a tall order to mitigate, and we're going to add, by my calculations, maybe 10% more to that, so in the order of 80%. But, you know, whatever the number is, 58%, 72%, you know, we're adding quite a load, and I tried to, you know, model that the best I could. Don mentioned this. On page four of Mr. Singer's packet, he talked about going from 5.4%, 333 units, up to 7%, which sounds like we're almost getting there. I believe the official number that is stated from December 21, 2020, is referencing a plan that was done in 2016. The numbers are identical. Someone can correct me if I'm wrong. And the SHI subsidized housing inventory was roughly 6,100 units. Every time you look at the actual study, because I don't do it every year, correct me if I'm wrong, our year-round population, year-round homes are going down, down, down. And I've heard now that the second homes are maybe 60% to 40% year-rounds in that ratio. And so we're losing our affordable communities. This is a huge problem. We're taking one step forward and two steps back. Again, these numbers can lie. We can play with these. The actual 24 units, if you calculate it, is, you know, 0.3%, not the 1.6% if you're adjusting for the actual impact that we're going to make to the community. And then finally, real quick, there was a big, you know, I'm no fan of the projects Chris Wise has brought forward, but in his defense, he's not here, I don't see a substantial difference between his project and this project. I'm not a proponent of developing our way out of the affordable housing crisis. I don't see that as a solution. I don't have great solutions, but I don't see that as a solution. And I just don't see how, on the one hand, you know, he gets shot down with, you know, animosity and criticism, and in this place, we're going to embrace it. And I'm not saying you guys are, but I just would say, in his defense, what is the difference? And that's all I have.
Hi, Judith Underwood. In full disclosure, I am a Water and Wastewater Commissioner, and I'm also a member of the Harwich Housing Trust. And I also live at 220 Sisson Road. So when you come out of Chloe's Path, my house is angled off to the right, so if somebody's turning a right, their headlights will go through my front floor, my front room there. I've said this publicly before in different meetings, a previous project at this location was brought before the trust pre-COVID, and we talked about it. It was smaller. I think it was 39 units. Number one, there's a problem with the road being a state road. I've been told by different folks at Town Hall that there'd be no way that they could do a traffic light there, like in front of the fire station, because it's a state highway. I don't know about that. But one thing that was not brought up tonight that I've still never been satisfied on, and it goes back to the meeting that Attorney Ford referenced, was that Engineer Riley did a presentation of how they were going to rebuild that hill. It's a gulch where the road first comes in off of Sisson. It was quite steep there, quite steep. And he talked about environmental matting, and he went through the whole process about layering and convinced me. I know his work. I believe in his work. And then, so that it went through, it got approved, and then, when they started doing the fill, they were not putting these environmental mats, as he discussed in that meeting, and it's on tape, I'm sure. And so I called Town Hall, and I said, can somebody come over here, please, and check this out? And nobody came over, and they suggested that I call him, which I did, and his office went back and forth with me and said that he couldn't speak with me because the next day after that planning board meeting, he was taken off of the project. So my concern, and I'm not an engineer, is that someday, with the amount of water that comes down off of Sisson, that hill is going to move, and some little kid, some 10-year-old will be on his bicycle, and there'll be a landslide. And maybe I'm completely wrong, but no one has ever answered that question of whether or not that was correctly built.
Thank you, Judith.
Thanks.
Attorney Singer's taking detailed notes. Okay. Seeing no one else, Town Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I think it's important to just make sure it's in the record as to what you have in your packet, what was presented this evening and what was presented previously. But when the town received the local initiative program application that you see in your packet, Assistant Town Administrator Megan Elders distributed that to staff and committees and asked for responses. And you'll see in your packet that we received responses from our Health Director, our Director of Planning and Community Development, the Superintendent of Schools for the Montemoye Regional School System, the Chairman of the Board of Assessors. We also have in the packet letters, the first one that we see here has the headline of Sisson Road, Chloe's Path, the Butters, and I believe it was a previous speaker, Mr. Gory. And so we have a letter in the packet from residents at 226 Sisson Road, 221 Sisson Road, 195 Sisson, 210 Sisson, 228 Sisson, 214 and 225. The board also has a separate letter from Karen Beatty, who I believe is a resident of 195 Sisson Road. We have a letter from Robert Cloveridge of Sisson Road. Today, the board would have received a forward, and I hope I'm saying the name right, but an email that was sent to me, and I forwarded to the board, from Georgine Rydel for the board's packet. You have a handwritten letter that was received today by Robert Thomason. We have now received, through Attorney Ford on behalf of the Doones, a letter, and Mr. Walpole has submitted a letter. And so I will still seek comments from department heads that have not responded on this, and we will continue to take letters and comments that anyone wishes to send so that the board can be aware of those.
Thank you, Judge. Attorney Singer, my intention would be to put this on our next agenda, which is two weeks from today.
Andrew, if I may, we were contemplating, Mr. Chairman, August 23 based on vacations of key participants, if that's okay?
As long as you two are contemplating, it's fine with me.
Thank you.
August 23 would be fine.
Okay. And we'll keep in touch to tell you where we're at. I think that the board's got some homework to do. I think you took detailed notes, so I think you're crystal clear about the concerns of the people that showed up tonight and the board. So thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. We appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you.
I'm going to give time for you guys to clear out and everyone else to clear out. Back in three minutes.
Wait a second now. I'm deaf to him. You can't go yet. I'm not deliberating. I'm just waiting for Michael. We got to see if it's the bathroom time. Harwich has a storied history. Took a bathroom break. Roche is sick. The moment they came back from the bathroom, he continued.
Resting?
Yeah. That's why I try to make sure. I look at things from a distance sometimes.
We'll add that if we want to go.
Yeah, the thing was, imagine your neighborhood, their street, your house.
Thank you, Mr. Walpole.
When you get home, think about your house with 400 movements.
Absolutely. We'll add that to the record. Thank you. So there's an additional letter from Mr. Singer. Want to take one?
That's your extra pile?
Yeah. It's growing. Is that your letter? Okay. John? That's what I was seeking. You're not wrong to say that. No good deed, John. I told you.
I know. I hear you.
Get us $36,000, and this is what I do to you?
How would you like to do your house? That would be asking me to...
No, not yet. He'd be remarkable. So it hasn't happened yet, but I guess... Yep, exactly. In my opinion, if I may, I'll be gush for you. He was remarkable. That was a motto we learned during tornado.
Was he?
That's why I made the karma. We said it's our table strength. I don't know why a conservation agent can't tell me.
All right, Don, you ready?
That was a phrase we used during...
Mary?
I'm using it now.
Back to order.
Exactly. And he is.
What do you say? We can get this done in three hours?
Okay, you have 55 minutes. I got my money's on you.
We're going back in.
Oh, certainly. Usually, I'm too loud.
And you want me to move mine further away, Bill?
That's a different question.
Okay, everybody, break's over. Back to the meeting. New business agenda item B, discussion and possible vote on potential increase from 4% to 6%, which is a local option, on short-term rental tax and allocation of funds. This is put on the agenda for a starting point. We have brought this up two years now, maybe three years, and it's been denied by past boards both times because there was no allocation of funds is why I voted against it. And I believe that that was the consensus of the board. Not only do we have the 4% we're already collecting, there's an option to add 2% more. The 4% that we're already collecting goes into the general fund. This board has, not this board, but past boards have taken up in nauseam three very critical things to the town of Harwich, one being wastewater and how we're going to pay for it, two being homes, housing, and then the third being OPEB, our other post-employment benefits, which we are deeply in the hole on. And our finance director is here tonight to answer any questions that we have or the public has, but the conversation is on whether or not we want to consider adding the 2% and allocating where that money is going to go to give the town administrator and the finance director time to create a policy. So I will start comments...
I've voted against the, in the past, the increase in 4%, 6% for various reasons, but I'm not stuck on that position. But I do wanna be sure, I'd like to have a discussion first on how we're gonna allocate the funds. Because the temptation is always to put that back into general funds, and then we don't, we can't count on it for major projects. You mentioned three, um, housing, wastewater. Be nice to know specifically how we're gonna use that, how we're gonna use that money.
Well, we are the policy-setting board, so in my mind, we would do housing, wastewater, and OPEB, and we would just decide what percentage goes where as a board.
And that's what we need to come back with a discussion on that and what that percentage should be.
We're gonna do that tonight. Mary, your turn.
I am all in favor of it. And frankly, the last discussion I saw was when I was on the Finance Committee just before last year's town meeting. And I believe the reason, it sounded to me, the reason you turned it down is there wasn't really enough time to educate the business community that was gonna be impacted by this. So I think this is a great time to talk about it, and I think we're nuts if we don't do it. It's money that we're throwing away. I looked in, I think, are there eight or 10 Cape towns that already do it? So we're not gonna hurt ourselves. I think we're throwing money away by not doing it.
Thank you.
And I agree, I was going for housing and wastewater, but I'm certainly open to talking about the third.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I think we've got rough agreement on that part of it. But for the public, I think it's important because nobody's gonna pay attention to what's been going on for four or five years. We had a trajectory, and I know Michael and I had been pretty much pushing back on that for a long time. It's when does Prop 2.5 actually become 7.5? We were basically grabbing new growth, we were grabbing things like this, and plowing them all into the operating budget. And big mistake, while I agree with Mary about it should be a no-brainer to be able to allocate this to specific things that we really want, understand one thing, this is volatile. This is not like property taxes and premising astronomical budget increases that are constrained by Prop 2.5 on property taxes, but not constrained in other areas, led us to the point of, you know, testing the waters to see how much we could continue to grow on an unsustainable flow of cash. So I'd feel much more secure if this thing was linked to what it was originally passed for. The debate in this legislature specifically talked about people coming in here and ruining the groundwater by coming, staying, eating, and then going away and having no particular stake in what the consequences were. If we earmark this towards the crisis that we're having in soaring, because it shouldn't all be on the shoulders of the people who live here, because they're not exclusively loading the nitrogen. People who visit are as well. And also, the fact that we need to have a workforce that actually exists when they arrive, this makes a whole hell of a lot of sense to adopt it, but only, and I know for myself, I agreed with everybody saying what they said previously, I wouldn't vote for it because it was unfettered. It was just a wheelbarrow of cash that we were gonna throw into the budget, and that I'm not for.
Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And based on Selectman Anderson's comments about Finance Committee and your previous actions, I think that was also related to three prospective articles that did not make it to the warrant that were being considered, and at least one of which may impact upon your discussions this evening. Originally, what was contemplated for the 2021 annual town meeting was a warrant article that would amend the town's rooms tax rate as it relates to the statute, and it would increase hotel motel and short-term rental from 4% to 6%. And I know that the agenda items talk specifically to the short-term rental, but it's my understanding that town meeting action would also need to be taken on that, because the town meeting through the Board of Selectmen would have to accept General Laws Chapter 64G, excuse me, Chapter 64G, Section 3A to amend that to a higher amount. So the board would initiate that, but it may require a town meeting action. So I have a question on that. Before I get to that question, one of the other articles that we contemplated was also potentially creating a special purpose stabilization fund that could house the monies that were allocated. And the one that was contemplated previously was simply for wastewater and not to put our Finance Director on the hot seat, and it may not be our Finance Director but counsel, I know that the town would have had to have accepted Chapter 40, Section 5B, Paragraph 4 to create that special stabilization fund. I'm not sure if that relates to a special stabilization fund for wastewater or any type of fund for those purposes. My question for the board is, if you are contemplating that increase, were you considering that as a potential article in your special town meeting, if in fact, we have a special town meeting in October or beyond?
My, the short answer for me at least, would be yes. Whether it be in the fall or whether we do it in the spring for the next, for the next cycle. And Joe, we do obviously need that approval at town meeting.
Yep.
A warrant article for sure. The intent of this conversation is to get the ball rolling.
Thank you.
And we do, as Mary mentioned, 10 other communities around us have adopted this. We're one of the holdouts, and we have been a holdout because we had nowhere to put the money, and three board members said we're not voting for this, and if it's going in the general fund.
Sure.
And I think as well, we were not an outlier at that point. Not many towns have really adopted that. And we didn't wanna put our business in our rental property in jeopardy, losing business to other communities, but that's no longer valid, valid argument.
So, intent of the board would be to consider the raise to 2%, look at a warrant article, ask the Town Administrator to create a warrant article that we can have further discussion and get public input on, and to work on a policy on where that money would be allocated? Mary?
Yes. Conceptually, I'm with you. My question is, what's the process for notifying the businesses that are then affected by it? I forget who the woman was who spoke at someone of the hearings about, you know, already having booked people into her business, and now she'd have to go back, and so I don't know what that process is.
Which part of the reason why we're doing this now and not waiting until the last minute, like we did the last couple of times. The, hold on one second, Sandy. The Chamber Director is here, and I know that prior to this meeting, she sent out an email to businesses saying that this was on the agenda. I think as we navigate closer to a policy and closer to the actual change and approval of the warrant article, we could probably rely on Bill Galvin's story to get more people to show up at the meeting, as well as the Chamber Director. Cindy?
Thank you. Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce. Just a couple of questions. Yes, we did put this off a couple of years because we wanted to be able to help the businesses get the information out. It throws everybody a little back. But if you do a special meeting in September, does this then have to start in January 2022? Or if we do it in town meeting in May, then it's 2023? As we've already told some of the businesses, we all know that's probably inevitable. We are one of eight that are holding out, and actually, the closest to us is actually our neighbor of Chatham. There's Falmouth, Edgertown, Truro, and Sandwich, as well as us, that still have not done it. Some of the businesses are here, actually, only one of them's here tonight, but it's because it's the height of season. We would wanna have more involvement from them, just to educate them that, okay, this is what's gonna happen. You now have until January 2023 when this has to then happen, and you have to start collecting, et cetera. I have also been doing some research with the other towns and my other counterparts. Some of the places that they have dedicated the money, affordable housing, wastewater, and tourism. Tourism is not just hotels and restaurants, it's also everything that we want people to come and see in our seven villages, whether it's the Cultural Center, Brooks Academy. We have seven villages that the tourists come and enjoy, the Cape Cod Lavender Farm. So I would maybe suggest...
That's why we give you the $35,000.
Actually...
But anyway.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna correct you, cuz you are wrong, but, no, the, that is, we adore having that, but that also, we can then help having the Lavender Farm and other people also come here for, just heads up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy?
I'm not, I'm taking somebody else's stuff, too.
Chairman, if I may, while we're waiting for the next speaker, the warrant article that was first considered, and any future warrant article, if you were doing an annual town meeting and you did not state the effective date, it's automatically effective for the first quarter of the fiscal year. So if the board wanted to have a later date, you would want that incorporated specifically in the warrant language, that it will take effect and at a future date other than the normal consideration.
Thank you, Joe. Sandy?
Yeah, if it goes...
State your name for the record.
Oh, Sandy McClarty, East Harwich. Yeah, a general, if this goes in the general fund, it's like a loophole to 2.5, Proposition 2.5, which sounds crazy. If we earmark it for wastewater, could that be implemented towards any technology in wastewater? And the reason I ask is, I know Brewster was not able to tap into the SRF, the State Revolving Funds for the IAs. And so are we promoting one technology over another in this fund, or can it be used for, you know, wastewater?
Used for anything, any wastewater.
Thank you, Sandy. Don?
Totally different track, but I've said this before, I wanna remind everybody. The law that this is, that enabled this specifically defines what a short-term rental stay is. And because of what happened in COVID, it has perverted a lot of stuff. Just because we have figures for the one-year cycle doesn't mean a whole heck of a lot right now, because if people were renting four months because they wanted to get their little escape from whatever city they were living in, we don't collect that anymore. So the scope of what it is we wanna do has to be pretty well-defined, and we have to understand that it's volatile, not only because it has to do with how many people come, but how long they stay.
Thank you, Don. So, Joe, I mean, personally, I think kicking the can down the road any longer is not the right thing to do. Wastewater and our debt for wastewater's not going anywhere. It just continues to climb. And affordable housing, as we all heard tonight, is a very hot topic. It would be my suggestion, anyway, that we put this on for the fall town meeting. There's only so much that we can pile on the May town meeting, and there's zoning articles, there's historic articles, there's planning articles, budgets. So if we could get this one wrapped up in the fall, it seems to make a lot of sense to me. So, board, comments?
I agree with that. I only, was only commenting, Don, is your suggestion, your comment, which is very valid. I would only state that even though it's a fluctuating amount of money, by designating those buckets, at least it won't go into the general fund, so we can keep it in, directed towards those areas, even though this, certainly, what you say is correct in my mind, just wanna point that out.
Mary?
I'm in agreement, but doing this is better than zero, so I say we go for it.
Don?
Soon as we see something tangible, I'll, I'll, for discussing it.
So for an action item for the Town Administrator or Administration and Finance Director, would the action item be to create a warrant article for the desire of raising the short-term rental from 4% to 6%? That would be action number one?
The board has to consider all three categories. We cannot segregate short-term rental only.
Okay.
So you would have to consider going up from 4% to 6% on all hotel motel short-term rental.
So that would just be, that would be my ask to you for that, for that warrant article.
Yep.
And then to work with the Finance Director, because I don't think the board should determine the entirety of the percentages, because I'm not sure right now what you have some of that money being used for. So I think a proposal coming back to us for the 6% number and a percentage based on the 6% number, allocation in the three, or wherever you wanna go with it, but wastewater and housing for sure, and the OPEB obligation, we're already budging roughly a half a million dollars a year going into that. So taking some money out of the general fund and going to there as a dedicated funding source, I know will also help our bond rating. Don?
Yep. And one further thing, as an ask for any article, I've been around a long time. Over the past 20-some-odd years, I've seen more and more things go to town meeting that end up saying, and under such terms and conditions, is the Selectman made it necessary? When we put this in, I'd like it to be locked into what they're voting. And if it has to be changed later, it has to go back to the same people who approved it in the first place.
Understood.
Comments from the public? Hearing none, and Joe, is that enough?
It certainly is.
Thank you. Next up, I put this on for a start of a conversation, Preservation Committee article for Harwich Center ideas. This would be another ask of Administration. We've all kicked off the idea of improvements in Harwich Center, and I believe we started that initiative about 22 years ago, and we're just starting to do some work.
More than that.
With that said, I know, Joe, when you did your walkthroughs in Harwich Center related to the grant, you did meet with Highways, and they talked about potential money available for some sidewalks. I know that that's not a CPC article and can't come out of that bucket, but as an overall picture, I'd like to see us explore that. I'd like to propose an article from the board, a CPC article, application for lighting in Harwich Center. That's something that fits the criteria. I know outside of Mr. Waystack's building, or the building kind of adjoining his parking lot, they put those nice lantern lights that shine down. I know as the West Harwich Captain's Row proposed the same sort of lighting coming in there, and I think it would be appropriate for the board to submit an article for lighting in Harwich Center. Comments? Larry?
Fair enough. I agree.
Mary?
Did you wanna go any further with that? I know those shared street things were supposed to be temporary and reviewed.
I'll go further with that after we're done with this.
Okay. I'm fine with what you've proposed.
Don? Got that one, Joe?
Say again?
Got that one?
I do, but I have several comments and questions, if I may. First, with regard to community preservation articles, I've mentioned to the board, and it just as an update, Megan and I have been conducting our budget preparation sessions, not only for fiscal year 2023, but to also develop the five-year outlook. And within that, the department heads, and I know some of them can recite it from memory because they've probably heard it so many times from me, that we're looking at their operating budgets, their capital budgets, and their community preservation budgets. And so just a reminder that I'll be collecting that and bringing it to the board for your input as to what projects you think the town, through Administration and the department, should sponsor. I am contemplating similar articles coming from Administration as well, and will certainly be able to create the lighting article that you suggested from the board. I know in the packet, there was also a discussion and question around parking in the center. And I will tell you that as far, for me, developing a five-year capital plan, cuz I don't believe that parking necessarily is an allowed allocation from CPC, but I am contemplating some actions to come before the board, where we may consider land purchases or takings, whatever the case may be, if there are defunct properties that could be used for parking. But that's a bigger conversation to come back for this board, for a more in-depth conversation.
Thank you, Joe. So I look forward to seeing the, some sort of article that we can submit to them, application. Joe, would you give an overview while we're on Harwich Center topic to Mary's question and what your timeline was? You and I discussed it the other day.
Yes, thank you, sorry. That was the other thing. I said I had several things, and I didn't even get to that one. I have completed the town's required survey back to the Department of Transportation on the conclusion of our Shared Streets, Winter Streets program, as they continue to say, which feels funny saying it in July, yet they did a later round. What that means is we have now completed that process as far as the Department of Transportation's concerned. However, throughout their survey, they talk about the fact that this funding was a one-time effort to create temporary solutions, and they do ask, is the town contemplating making any of that permanent? And I do think that a number of the things that were accomplished with that, we may want to, the town may wanna consider going from temporary to permanent, or conversely, if they are temporary, when we wanna discontinue that. And so, of course, I'd be talking about the Jersey barriers, with the traffic mitigations and the traffic calming, the, I'm not saying the right thing, the flower pot, thank you, the planters, there we go, black thumb here, that drapery... want to, the town may want to consider going from temporary to permanent, or conversely, if they are temporary, when we want to discontinue that. And so of course, I'd be talking about the, the Jersey barriers with the, the, the traffic mitigations and the traffic calming, the, the, I'm not saying the right thing, the flower pot, thank you, the planters, there we go, black thumb here, that drape over the Jersey barriers, as well as the, the painted islands and things of that nature. So the town should, through the Board, consider, one, were they meant to be temporary? If so, when do we discontinue? And for those that were considered to be temporary, do we want to make them permanent? And so I think there should be an additional discussion on that, and the early fall might be the best time to do that. So as far as the, the state's concerned, is we've met our obligations where I've reported out, I've shown photographic evidence of what we've done, contemplated some of the, the pitfalls, some of the things that went right, some of the things that went wrong. And now I think the state would just be looking for input of, is there anything you'd like to do further? And so I think that is the next question to come before the Board.
So, Joe, you'll get that response that you sent to the Board for them to review?
So I was hoping to, but when I completed the online survey, it does not provide a copy, it just says, "Thank you, your survey's been provided." Classic state operation. If I can acquire it again, I'll provide that.
And we will put that on for early September discussion. I know several business owners have reached out and they would, they'd like to discuss what's there and what can be. And then anything we can do in Harwich Center over the next year would be great. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I just ask a quick question? Because as I drove into town tonight, I noticed a new addition to our signage, electronic speed sign, you know, coming from East Harwich, down Route 39.
Right by Brooks Park.
Right as you enter into the town.
Yes, there he is. Thank goodness.
Please tell me that that's permanent.
I'll tell you, it works, because it slowed me right down.
It slowed me down.
Mr. Chair, Dave Gilmet, Chief of Police. Yes, that went up today. That was our intent. There was discussion some time ago about issues in the center, and especially coming into the center from that direction, and it drops to 35 and then 25 right before Oak Street, so we.
Forty-five, forty, thirty-five.
Yeah, exactly, right, coming down, yeah, so. And we have experienced a high crash level at that Oak Street intersection, so we thought that was a perfect spot to put our very first one out. So it went up today, it's operational, it is permanent.
Yes!
Ah, it's permanent.
Great.
Well, Chief, while we have you, kudos to the patrolmen, too. I mean, Harwich Center looks like a very different spot when there's a motorcycle doing radar and cruisers park there. And, and we have had numerous complaints about speeding through Harwich Center and construction vehicles, and when we had parking on both sides of the road, you kind of ran the gauntlet in the morning trying to get through there with your mirror still attached.
Yeah, yeah, so we, we have tried to focus some additional efforts in the center, and they are making some stops. It doesn't seem to be a horrific speed problem, but it's definitely a congestion problem, and there is a speed problem when there is no congestion, I would say.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on.
Or D.
D, yeah. Discussion of possible vote to approve a license for Dan Ward to farm bay scallops in Herring River under a private dock at 99 Riverside Drive. The information, there's a, there's a fairly extensive packet material in here. I would note that it's been approved by our Harbor Master and our Waterways Committee. For me, I think the project is fairly self-explanatory, and private property and approved by Harbor Master certainly goes a long way. Do we want this gentleman to give a introduction to himself and the project, or do we want to make a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion.
I'd be happy to second it.
Why don't you introduce yourself, anyway? You don't have to say anything else, just tell us who you are.
I'm Dan Ward, and I just wanted to say, the only thing I really wanted to say is that, for some reason, only my name made it onto the agenda, but this is a partnership with the property owner Jeff Lang of Harwich. And so this is Jeff's idea, I just may, I have an experience and a background in aquaculture, so I'm assisting Jeff in working through the permitting process and best methods and, and kind of different techniques and that type of thing, but this is certainly Jeff's project more than mine, so.
Thank you. Mary?
I move that we vote to approve a license for Dan Ward to farm bay scallops in Herring River under a private dock at 99 Riverside Drive, Harwich. And the other person's name is?
Jeff Lang.
Jeff Lang.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, town administrator?
If I may, you'll see in your packet, towards the end, we see Mr. Lang and Dr. Ward's present, request for the license, and then you can see the letter from the Commonwealth of Mass Division of Marine Fisheries, and the letter dated April 2021. And you can see at the bottom of that, they've indicated that they have reviewed this as is their requirement, but they indicate that there, there's a condition that they would recommend be attached to the license, and I just wanted to make the Board aware of that and read that for your consideration. They indicate in the letter that it is their opinion that issuance of an aquaculture license for this site, including the conditions stated below, would not cause a substantial adverse impact on the shellfish or other natural resources of the Herring River. Consequently, the Board of Selectment may issue the license in accordance with Chapter 30, Section 57 of Mass General Laws, provided that the following condition is placed on the license. Number one, during periods when the conditionally-approved shellfish-growing area is in the closed status, bay scallops may be harvested for sale of the adductor muscle only, and that is the only condition. So I would recommend that the Board understand that your vote is to include that condition as directed by DMF.
You want to incorporate that?
I will.
Mary, that was in your motion?
That was in my motion.
And that's where my second goes.
In your second? And that's acceptable? Stand up to the mic.
So that's, that's kind of boilerplate, they come from Division Marine Fisheries. The reason is, is that they classify different areas, either open, conditional, or closed. And so if it's a conditional area, that's what you have to deal with. The, the Herring River is open, so it doesn't even apply. So it's, there's no restriction. But adding that to the license has no restriction on us, so there's no problem.
Thank you. Any discussion from the Board?
No.
Discussion from the public?
Mark Kelleher, West Harwich. I know Dan, I know Jeff. I would normally oppose this, because most shellfish licenses should only be issued to residents, as it is all over the Cape. However, they have unique skills, both in location and skills, so I wholeheartedly support it. And I ask you to consider that there are some other innovative aquaculture projects that are by Harwich residents and taxpayers, and I appreciate your consideration for that. Thank you.
Thank you. And no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Four, zero, Joe? The next two are updates on other things that we've had on our agenda for the past, I don't know, 20, 20 years roughly? Not entirely, but half. Joe, will you give us an update?
Yes, thank you. So the update regarding 203 Bank Street, I need to acquire the services of a surveyor to finalize a situation that the town was made aware of a few months ago, and that is to do a site plan to determine whether an additional wetland needs to be delineated on the property. That needs to be finished and, and included, if required, as a condition of the future sale. So I've directed the conservation agent to reach out to a local surveyor that can do the work, and we expect to have that person under contract for less than $5,000 within the coming week. So I'm hopeful to be able to come back to the Board, if not at a meeting in August, certainly in early September, to finalize that, to get that proposal out.
Thank you, Joe. And, and that 203 Bank Street, that extra wetland, that's something that's just been overlooked for?
That's my understanding as well, yep. And so since we don't have an updated site plan, updated site plan has to be created by the surveyor, and that will help us determine if that delineation is in fact necessary or appropriate.
And then RFP, sure to follow.
Correct, yep.
Thank you. West Harwich School?
Thank you, sorry. I always look at it as Five Bell's Neck, but I understand the reference. The advertisement, I missed the deadline last week, however, we have met the deadline. It is online for the Central Register today. It'll be published in the Cape Cod Chronicle Thursday of this week and Thursday of next week. We're just finalizing the internal language to meet everything that was referenced by vote of town meeting. And so the timeline that I gave you at your last meeting has been pushed out by, I believe, just a week.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Questions from the Board, comments?
None.
I said, anyone in the public?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, very quickly, just to put out there, I've had inquiries from individuals that wanted to sit down and talk with me about the RFP. It's inappropriate for me to do that until the RFP is out there. Anyone that's looking at, once the RFP is out, I can certainly meet with them, but I have to record everything and add it to the, to the RFP. So I just want the Board to know that I'm not ignoring folks, we're trying to go through requirements under 30B.
And the, and the RFPs will be done to the will of town meeting, so.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to G. Mary, a motion?
I move that we vote to hold a public hearing for the alleged violations on July 3, 2021, at Port Restaurant and Bar, 541 Route 28.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, zero, Joe?
I mo, I move that we vote to authorize the town administrator to be the hearing officer for the public hearing for alleged violations on July 3, 2021, at Port Restaurant and Bar, 541 Route 28.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, zero, Joe? Thank you.
Keep going.
Yeah, keep going.
Michael?
Chief?
On your next item, Mr. Chairman, I just, a point of clarification, if I may, if the Board may give it to me. On these one-day entertainment licenses at private residences, this is per our noise bylaw under Section G. This, this is what I'm interpreting it to be. Under Section G, a special permit, application for a permit for relief from noise level designated in this chapter on the basis of undue hardship may be made to the Board of Selectment. It's not, it's clearly not an entertainment license under a license establishment on a Chapter 138, right? It's a private residence. So what I'm seeking clarification on is what this means to me, and I would instruct my personnel, the hours that you agree to, if, if you're calling it the special permit, if it's something else, please tell me. But if you're calling it a special permit, then they would be exempt from the noise bylaw regulation during those hours. That's what that says to me, how it's written in the bylaw.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Comments from the Board?
I don't want to do that.
Don?
What she said.
Larry?
What she said.
Well, I know on, there's two of them on here tonight, the August 20th.
We need some more discussion. What, what, how, how do we handle it?
Well, Joe, Joe has, and we did, we did say noise bylaw was to be followed on the last two that we voted.
Yeah, we did.
We can put any condition on it we want.
Correct, Mr. Chairman, yeah. Right, I, I think it, it's up to you. I just, I just need clarification as to how to instruct my personnel if we were to get a complaint. I'm just saying, it, it may be something completely different, an entertainment license the Board would allow the, obviously the entertainment, and if you tell me enforce the noise bylaw as written, regardless of the entertainment license, then that's what we'll do. But my, my concern is I need to differentiate, under a license establishment on 138, I would say it, the regulations apply, and, and the noise, that, that they have to, the noise regulation found in the liquor regulation has to be complied with, regardless of a special entertainment license. But that's not what this is. This is a private residence.
Thank you, Chief. And I would just note, J is actually, we voted this one a week, two weeks ago, and this was just a change, the date was changed, they had put in the wrong date. So we've already voted on that. Mary?
Is there any reason we can't vote to approve this one-day entertainment license, but it has to be, the event must be conducted in accordance with our noise bylaw? Does that cover it?
Thank you for the question, and to build off of the question and what the Chief just said, staff has similar concerns and considerations, meaning, I think I mentioned at your last meeting that we've seen a significant uptick in these applications. And because, as Chief mentioned, under the noise bylaw, the Board has the right to issue special permits, they have been so rare in the past that we don't have a special permit for that, and we've relied upon the entertainment license as a similar vehicle, or mechanism, if you will. You may be aware of an annual, what I would consider to be, an agricultural festival that has been granted license before, so that's why staff has been relying upon this. Chief is absolutely right. The entertainment license, as the police would understand it, as I, as administrator and hearing officer, if you would understand it, is meant to be to a licensed establishment. And we, myself, Megan, Danielle, and Ellen, have been telling anyone that applies for these events at private residences, that they need to understand that if the Board grants this, this is not a license to be noisy. This is not a license to avoid the noise bylaw, and quite the contrary. And so that's why you may recall, you had one earlier this season where the person had looked for it that were hours outside of the parameters, and you didn't grant it for those hours. You, you kept it consistent with noise bylaw. So my take on it would be, and to follow up with the Chief's request, that the town indicate that we understand that this is a, we're aware of the event, but it is not permission to act beyond the boundaries of the noise bylaw.
Don?
Especially if we're talking outdoors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I was going in the same direction that Joe was going. Universally here, instead of, because one by one, it's death by a thousand paper cuts here. I can't ever remember this happening, and certainly I don't particularly want to get into the business of licensing people who are having after-parties for their graduations for their kids. And that seems to be where we're careening down the road, so the private residence things are the private residence things. They either conform or they don't conform to the noise bylaw. And if, my threshold would be, okay, you hire somebody like a caterer or a band, and now you got some commercial entity that's involved with this, maybe pouring even, that's one thing. But I mean, I, this is a policy issue, I don't want to get involved with issuing a special permit to everybody who wants to have like 20 of their friends over. And it seems like that's where we're starting to head, is like, you know, pre-validation that, yeah, you can have a good time, and we're, we're forgiving you. It's, it's ridiculous. I mean, if people have graduation parties, people have after-parties for weddings and stuff, and if, as long as it's just your friends, I don't want to get in the business of regulating that.
So staff has been indicating to any applicants that we do not consider this an application to make noise beyond the noise bylaw. And, and we, we encourage them to read the noise bylaw.
Mary?
I don't think it's any party. The ones we've done so far, I think we're all with live music, which that raises to another level than just having 20 people over.
Certainly worthy of a policy discussion, but for these two, if we vote these two with the understanding that they have to abide by the noise bylaw, that will buy us some time to have the conversation about future. Does that work?
Yeah.
Does that work for the Chief?
Chief, does it satisfy your request for staff?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that's fine. I think it's, it's definitely a topic we need to clarify, though, for, for our purposes of enforcement, whatever the Board decides.
I love meetings, so you, Joe and I will meet. Liar.
All right, let me make some motions.
Yep, make a motion.
I move that we approve a one-day entertainment license for a private residence located at 638 and 638A, Route 28, Harwich Port. Event to be held on August 20, 2021, from 4:30 to 9:30 PM with live music outside. Such event to follow the noise guidelines.
Bylaw.
Bylaw.
Conforming to. Second.
Discussion?
No.
The only discussion I would have, as I was sent, one thing about putting these on the agenda, it does give the public a chance to come here and, and vote against it, or speak against it. We did get one email pointing out a Facebook page, and this is a vacation rental that advertises Stepping Stone, Stepping Stone's Home, Cape Cod Vacation Rental, available for family vacations, reunions, weddings, and more. So this is a business. So if this one comes back before us, I think we have to have a conversation about it being a business. conversation about it being a business, but we'll have that as part of our meeting. Joe?
Sorry, was your comment specific to this particular applicant?
Yes.
Thank you. So we will make sure that if the board approves these and signs them, when staff releases them, we'll release them with copies of the noise bylaw.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, Joe?
Yep.
Go ahead, Mary.
I move that we approve a one-day entertainment license for a private residence located at 44 Chatham Road, Harwich, event to be held on August 27th, 2021, 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM with live music outside, in accordance with the Harwich noise bylaws.
Second.
Bylaw.
Okay, moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh, one discussion.
Go ahead.
I just note that the application said the ending was to be 11, and I just wanted to be perfectly clear that the ending is 10.
Thank you, and as you indicated before, that the only reason this is coming back to the board is because we couldn't read their handwriting as to the date, your original vote on the hours was till 10:00 PM, that's why it was noticed that way.
This is the one we previously voted, Don?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and, and just in general, this is going to be my divide line, I'm probably going to continue to vote against anything that has, because it's not just live music, could be electronic music, you, uh, either you do or you don't abide by the bylaw, and I don't want to get, if somebody operating like, an offline catering or Airbnb kind of tie-in, that's one thing, but I'm, I'm not going down the slippery slope of saying, yeah, Michael's party's okay, but Larry's isn't.
Thanks. But her, her motion was specific to the bylaw.
Correct.
So we are covered on 150 feet for all noise.
I just don't want to be jurisdictionally responsible.
I got you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed?
No.
Three, one. Joe?
Keep going.
Go ahead.
I move that we vote to approve a new seasonal 2021 Common Vicular's license, Ashwood Food Service, Inc., DVA Snack Shack, 715A Main Street, pending certificate of insurance, and Building Department, Health Department approval.
Second.
Okay, moved in second, any discussion? Joe, will you just give us a quick overview of this pending, pending inspections, and I would just say to the board that I put this on here, knowing how the board feels about the pending inspections, because I don't want to delay this any longer than it's already been delayed.
Thank you, and, and if I can, uh, make sure for Bill's purposes I don't bury the lead, um, 715A Main Street is the Sacquetucket Harbor, uh, establishment formerly known as the Snack Shack, so, uh, Ashwood Food Service Incorporated, um, they're actually not going to be doing business under that name, but I told them to go forward presently, we can change that, uh, because that was the name of the prior establishment, uh, but Ashwood Food Service Incorporated is known locally as Jake Rooney's, uh, they were the sole bidder for our, uh, rice, restaurant, RFP, um, for operations at that location, so part of what they need to do is get this Common Vic license, and you can see the comments, um, I hope you got the email in your pack of the update from our health director, the reason why she was not able to do that is I directed them, um, to have a meeting with me, so we're negotiating the terms of their operation, so I said before they went with Common Vic, I wanted to, uh, ask and, and get several questions answered, we had a chance to meet this morning, it's been a very productive conversation, uh, and the next step would be the approval of this, I, I do recommend that the board, um, approve the Common Vic so the process can go forward, subject to all those pending approvals, they are not anticipating opening any, uh, any sooner than August 10th, um, and I will also tell you that even though it's not in the agenda, but as it relates to this topic, um, the town still has not been able to acquire, uh, the goods and the equipment, uh, that the prior establishment had, we've been unable to get a response from them, so that is, um, a hitch in the process right now, but this is a necessary step by the next potential operator, uh, at that location, and I would recommend the board's approval.
And I would just add that, um, there's a few minor things left, Joe has the ability to do contracts, uh, $25,000, so we won't have to have this back before us to execute the contract, therefore, if Joe's willing or able to get this done in the next few days, then it will be a done, signed contract, and they'll be able to open.
That's correct, and of course, that contract would come back to you folks under my TA report, um, but we are looking, uh, and the RFP did state that this would be a contract for services, uh, because we're trying, the town's trying to expedite to have something at that location, as the board has expressed that desire, and I've made it clear to the, to the bidder, that this is, um, simply for the season, which will, um, is expected to end by October 15th, excuse me, October 11th, 2021, uh, I'll be coming back to you in September for, um, longer RFPs for both, uh, the golf course and Sacquetucket Harbor, um, for perhaps, you know, more establishments in longer term.
Thank you. Comments from the board before I go to the public? Boards all set?
All set.
No, I'm anxious to move ahead.
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman, Richard Wastekowicz, if I can, through you to Mr. Powers, is the bidder going to be, be unfettered and not have, be dictated what their menu was going to be, and they have free rein to do what they wish to do?
We're not telling them what kind of french fries we like.
Mr. Chairman, I must object to the use of, uh, unfettered and free rein, uh, however, uh, during negotiations today, I said to them, please don't tell me your menu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Powers.
I think folks will be pleased, it's going to be similar, but not identical to Jake Rooney's, but.
That's a great point, though.
It's an exciting opportunity, but I can't say unfettered, ever.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, Joe?
Thank you.
Going to A, special board meeting Tuesday, August 10th, Sewer Cad Modeling, Joe?
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, on behalf of our water, wastewater superintendent, what Dan and I have considered, um, there are a number of milestones that are potentially being, uh, reached, and we are asking the board to consider a standalone meeting, so, um, you, with your summer schedule, your next full meeting is meant to be August 9th, uh, here in the Griffin Room, so we are looking at August 10th at 6:00 PM, and it is meant to be a broader discussion and to resume community engagement, um, discussions, and to try and, um, ramp that up again as we were able to do prior to pandemic. As you can see in the, in the agenda, uh, Dan and I, at the time of printing, uh, definitely want to have the board have a broader discussion on, uh, revisions to the comprehensive wastewater management plan, we did hear from GHD that they're ready to, uh, roll out their first iteration of the sewer cad model, uh, but in a conversation, a lengthy conversation and meeting that I had with, uh, the wastewater superintendent today, uh, and I know, um, selectmen Valentine's aware of this next item, we have been made aware by Carol Ridley at the Pleasant Bay Alliance Work Group, that the long anticipated and awaited annual report from the Pleasant Bay Work Group, um, on, um, updated, uh, watershed modeling and updated nitrogen attenuation rates is scheduled to be released, uh, we thought it appropriate to have that, um, release be coinciding with the board's discussion on these matters of wastewater, so we'd be looking at, uh, the Pleasant Bay Alliance presentation on that report, CWMP revisions, uh, sewer cad modeling, and then last but by no means least, um, the superintendent and I would like to engage the board in a conversation, uh, of a more general nature of, uh, the next, uh, our next path forward, uh, and Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that gets back to, um, what would this board and what does this town want to envision for future partnerships of a regional nature, uh, and the governance that goes in that, and so that obviously is, um, a reference to what was being contemplated with the DHY agreement, uh, and as further proof that that is not dead, um, it's an opportunity for this board to host the community to begin those discussions, uh, we know that the town of Yarmouth is, is anxious to move forward on that, we know that the town of Dennis is working on, uh, their first iteration of the comprehensive wastewater management plan, but what, um, if I can speak for Dan, what we're looking for tonight is to see if the board is ready and willing to engage in that community effort on many items to do with wastewater, um, we have, I think, what turns out to be a fortunate, uh, conflict with the room, we're not able to use Griffin Room because of an already scheduled regulatory board, so we have reserved the multipurpose room at the Harwich Community Center, and so, um, if you're agreeable to that meeting, and again, I can go over the agenda topics that we think would be discussed, um, I could also use this as an opportunity to reach out to my counterparts, uh, in, uh, Dennis and Yarmouth, to let them know that we're having a Harwich-specific community engagement, but they may wish to be there to be present to hear the discussions about our sewer cad modeling, our, um, revisions to the CWMP, and some of the discussions about steps going forward.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, walking into that room, however, because I've made this comment numerous times, and I've been on the negotiating team, the only cost comparison we have ever been offered, so when you read numbers in a newspaper, it's this, how much is it going to save you as opposed to you building your own? I would like to know, going into that room, what the differential would be, the same plant, the same site, the same gallonage, the same towns, but one of them governed by a commission and one of them, uh, being done on as a, as an IMA with an interministerial agreement, because that's essential in my thought process, is, how much am I willing to give up for, how much am I getting?
So I, I, I think I can offer a response, um, that I've heard from our wastewater superintendent, and the short answer is, we, staff, would anticipate that the cost would be similar to what it would be if we go into a governance group, uh, that is to say, if we went into it with a commission, we're aware of the costs that, um, Harwich would have anticipated. If the town wishes to go into a different route and the other towns agree to it of an IMA, we don't expect those costs to go down, we expect those costs to be similar, if not greater than, uh, what's being contemplated, because to participate in that, we still have to bring money to the table, so I, to me, we can answer that before we get in the room, um, but that's not the final answer, um, and it is meant really, if I may, and I know the cameras are still running and Bill's writing, but if I can turn the tables on the board and say, I'd ask the same question of you all, is where, where do you want to come from on this, and what are you looking for? So we can do that, but I would hate my inelegant answer to thwart the meeting to occur on the 10th, I think it's important on many levels that we, the town, reengage, uh, broader community discussion on wastewater, try to drum up, um, I mean, it's not an exciting thing to do on the 10th, but the Mariners won't be playing, the playoffs will be over by then, um, but to really start to reengage the community engagement that was thwarted by the pandemic, and if, and if not August 10th, Dan and I are comfortable with that, but it should be soon after that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the only reason I brought it up is because one, one of these is irrevocable, I mean, if, if we go down a path. Every town meeting has to agree to the exact same language, and we, the day after that gets voted, we no longer have any control over even the change in the agreement, it doesn't ever come back to a town meeting again, going into that, I want to be informed as to what are, what's the overall benefit here, and can we derive most of that benefit one way or another, I brought it up because that question's been pervasive, I've asked that of David Young, I don't know how many times, and I've not gotten an answer, it keeps going back to build your own versus do everything, for me, stepping in the room, as much as I know about it, I, I, there has to be a separation between, uh, what is you trying to accomplish and whether this does that, and how you try to accomplish it, because that's a big deal to me, is, uh, are we getting into something we can't get out of and we have no control over, but we can also do in another way where we do have control.
I think if this board is agreeable to that, that event, what you just said is very helpful for me to reach out to my colleagues in the other towns, and strongly suggest that they may want to attend this meeting as well. But my, my statement to this board is, we, the town of Harwich, need to reengage in these conversations, um, so that you can start making informed decisions, you can, uh, more, um, efficiently direct staff of the questions that you have and the answers that you're looking for from us, um, because quite frankly, uh, neither the superintendent nor I were contemplating having that particular, um, engineering firm be a participant.
And I get that, but what I'm saying is, and Michael and I have talked about this for quite some time, there's never been an opportunity, and Larry and I have spoken about it, there's never been an opportunity where we sat down and said, okay, paragraph one of the, uh, you know, DHY agreement says, what does it mean, what do we have to do, what does somebody else have to do, paragraph two says, what do we have to do, what do they have to do? To a certain degree, I felt railroaded, because we haven't even talked about what the agreement says, but we got to accept the agreement, so that's why I'm saying this, is that, step one is, what is it saving over what other reality, and step two is, the agreement itself, we've never walked through the agreements as it currently exists in public to determine whether we were going to be supporting it and asking for a town meeting to support it, we, we haven't gotten anywhere near that.
August 10th, two weeks, is that enough time to get people to the meeting? And my problem with these meetings is always, uh, people don't show up, and, and it is, we, tonight in the housing one, we had comments that, it's summertime, it's summertime, there's an absolute, one second, Larry, there's an absolute need to have this meeting, and I'm fine for the 10th, and I would suggest that each selectman that has individual things that they want brought forward under that topic, email the town administrator and Dan Pelletier, so that, and, and not on August 8th, like, this week, we'll have time to prepare the materials, some stuff we won't be able to get, but if we're going to have a educated conversation and not just talk some more, I think that we need to allow for as much time to get as many people to this meeting as possible, so I'm not sure two weeks is enough time for that to happen with everybody's summer schedule, and again, I want to have an educated conversation, I'm sure Dan and GHD have plenty of information for us, but is the board going to be ready to ask the difficult questions and make decision on direction? Larry?
I'm hoping, uh, that we can delay it a week, because I'm, I'm not available on the 10th.
So that would put us.
To me, that's good enough right there to stop.
So that would put us to the, to the 17th, or the next one would be the 24th, and I'm not sure what our meeting schedule is, oh, that's a Tuesday anyway, so the 17th or the 24th?
I, um, you, you have the 16th open, um, we were, so again, our effort by staff was trying to identify a standalone meeting that would only be topics related to wastewater, so that's why we wanted to marry it as close to your meeting schedule, but certainly with schedule conflicts like that, so I would offer that you have, um, Monday, the 16th, open, because it's not dedicated to a board meeting, sorry, I just, I hear Dan screaming from off Cape, we can't do that, that week, because Dan's not available, um, so that's why we settled on the 10th, we're prepared to push it out, uh, certainly if you wanted to, the week of the 23rd, we're prepared to push it out beyond Labor Day, but what we wanted to, to demonstrate is that GHD is ready for the sewer cad modeling, which we've been waiting, uh, anticipating that first iteration rollout, and that's a, that's a very significant achievement, uh, the Pleasant Bay Alliance update, we do want that to get out as quickly as possible so that everyone can start vetting what that means, and then the, the, that final topic, um, well, the final two topics, the CWMP revisions, that was never meant to be, that was the only meeting we were going to talk about it, and in fact, for all these topics, this was never meant to be the, the sole meeting, this was meant to be the discussion, and it was meant to be a clarion call to say, we're discussing it in the summer, because the work never stops, but we're going to discuss it after Labor Day as well.
Agreed.
Yep, agreed.
So, 16th, if you want to check with Dan and get back to the board?
I can tell you that Dan will kill me if I said the 16th, because he is not available, he is away. So we can contemplate the 24th, if that works for board members?
It does.
The 24th?
Same place?
Yeah, I, well, I, I think it's appropriate to try and have it at the, um, at a, a bigger room.
He, he's gone. He recognized me?
Who's the chair?
He is right now.
Temporary chair.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Temporary Chair, uh, I, I just want to make sure, though, as to what Michael was saying, uh, because too much water is passed under the bridge, can we get a fresh copy of the last version of the agreement for all of us, and put that somewhere that's really prominent on our website? For DHY?
My answer is I'll certainly try, my concern is, I don't know that what we would consider the final agreement, or the final version, is what the other towns or the, the vendor may think.
I'm pretty sure I got votes right up to the very end.
If I may, Mr. Member, I would rely upon you, if you said that this is the final version.
Okay.
We will push that forward.
Okay.
It's better than not having anything.
Understood.
We'll, we'll follow up on that, Don.
Pick a date?
24th.
And the question was, was that going to be in the same location, and I would recommend, I can work with Carolyn, I didn't envision that date, but I can work with Carolyn, and I would recommend that we want it to be in a bigger room, uh, it's my understanding that my predecessor had done events there, and I think it's appropriate to say, we're looking for a bigger venue, because we're looking for a, a bigger, uh, response, because this is a bigger topic, agreed.
Larry, did you have a comment?
I, I think you might have already explained what, uh, Joe mentioned, that he could go over what the agenda items might be for the conversation, was it basically those highlights?
Yeah, is that, yep, so it would be the, um, the Pleasant Bay Alliance, their annual report, and specifically the updated nitrogen attenuation rates, that's coming out, we, we need to get into that, so that would be a topic, uh, we've talked before about CWMP revisions and the sewer cad, so the two topics that are on this agenda tonight, those would also be there, and then the last one is that open-ended of a discussion on the path forward, where does this board and where does the town want to go with everything else going forward, so I would say three concrete topics and one beginning of a very big topic.
So under the CWMP revision concept, I'm just really hoping that we'll be able to talk about the underlying assumptions about development in sewer as a town, thank you.
I, I would say we would absolutely contemplate that at a future meeting, what we're envisioning for this next dedicated meeting is, um, town staff and consultants, so that's Dan, myself, and others, working with GHD, GHD, as they told you at one of your earlier meetings, has reached out, uh, to the, to the environmental, um, MEP, I'm drawing a blank, but the state's Environmental Protection Department, and we have their input on what you would need to do to make revisions to the CWMP, so we think it's important, that's why you can see for this meeting. So we think it's important, that's why you can see for this meeting, it is dependent upon GHD. GHD Engineering for their sewer CAD modeling, for their update on the CWMP revisions, to, to be part and parcel of the discussion for Pleasant Bay. So now, what I'd really like to then say, Mr. Chairman, is, I'm now remembering that there was a reason why we did August 10th. What I'd like to do is work with staff and other stakeholders to find out the best possible date other than August 10th to come back. We will shoot for August 24th, but I don't want to get shot if I just, you know, impacted upon a stakeholder that said they couldn't be there.
If we do that sooner than later, so that we can get it to the public, so that they can start inviting people.
So given that the wastewater superintendent wasn't here, I'm going to assign that to him.
Sandy McClarty, real quick, it seemed like there was an emphasis on the DHY, IMA versus separate entity, and I still feel the, the question, it begs is, is that, the underlying assumptions would, would influence how we approach a DHY? If, for instance, just to throw it out there, our, our flows are 200,000 gallons per day or whatever, 100,000 gallons per day, then maybe we shift away from an intermunicipal agreement towards coaxing Chatham to be open to something. But it just seems, you know, Dan Pelletier reassured me, you know, the, the well stations, that has to be done no matter what, Sandy. We're not, it's not that we're abandoning.
We got a, we got a, we got a start of a meeting.
Okay.
We'll have conversation at that meeting, and I think what you heard tonight was, especially from the town administrator, this is the beginning of bringing back the public engagement, bringing back meetings. So there's no, there's no set, but we're not taking tonight, it's not on the agenda, to take people's suggestions on what to put on that meeting.
It just concerned me that if we're going to be inviting, say, like, a Yarmouth and Dennis, it, it adds a focus, maybe.
Well, it's a conversation that we need to have anyway, because we haven't had the conversation with them since we stopped all the conversations. So it's time to talk to them about what we're going to do.
I'll leave my con, yeah.
But we'll talk. Mary?
I just had one question on that. If that isn't a lot for one meeting, you know, maybe some of those are quicker than others, but the Pleasant Bay issue, and then the CWMP, and then the sewer CAD modeling, and then I figure that's going to take a lot right there. Should it be a separate one for the DH, DHY?
It, it certainly can. I, I, I put out the DHY, I'm going to read what Dan wrote, and, and I'm really cursing him not being here, but I told him he didn't have to be. To discuss the path forward is, we, your staff, would be looking for direction from the board on what type of governance does the Harwich Board of Selectmen want to pursue for regional wastewater efforts, if you wish to pursue regional wastewater efforts? So do you want it to be a commission? Do you want it to be an intermunicipal agreement? Do you want it to be something that we haven't contemplated yet? That's meant to be at the end of the night, these are the takeaway questions that we can come back to. I would suggest a six o'clock meeting that we could cover, I would say, within the half hour to 45 minutes, the sewer CAD modeling iteration, because we're going to have more, that we could, we could discuss the Pleasant Bay Alliance adjusted nitrogen attenuation rates briefly, but those will both have greater impacts on the future meetings. So I think it's appropriate to sort of light the fuse for a really inelegant phrase, but to do it to start.
To start all-
To start it, but then to understand and to tell everybody, including our potential partners in other towns, that we are engaging in the conversation. We may not be working on their timetable, but we never promised we would. Each town has to work on their own.
Can we, Joe, as soon as we confirm the state, can we get it to Bill? Can we get it, I'll call Sandy and give to Sandy. They have a fair following.
Yep.
We want to invite as many people to this meeting as we possibly can.
We need more involvement.
And sooner rather than later when it's set up. Don, go ahead.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. A pleasure. I commend you for, for what you're doing with this. You know, all I want to be able to say to everybody out in the public is, because of the way we're doing it and because of the measured, the steps we're taking and the larger discussion, no one should have the assumption that we're careening towards an article at a special town meeting this fall. No one. Because this is going to require a heck of a lot of review, and Mary's right, there's a lot of stuff to look at. So the, the thing that I've always had a problem with is, it just seemed like the point was, get people into a room at a town meeting to vote on this, and that's not what the destination is.
Not at all. Joe, just one more ask. As quick as we can get material distributed to the board, the meeting's on the 24th. I really don't want it on the 20th, I want it tomorrow. So whatever's done by GHD, Pleasant Bay, anything else, the board needs that information long before this meeting.
And, and we will, and that was our expectation anyway. I, I believe we can expect the Pleasant Bay report later this week, if I remember the, the update correctly, but as soon as we get it, we will push it right out.
Okay. Old Business B procurement update, Joe?
Certainly. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you can see that we've brought back Big Bertha, which is your 11 by 17 update of procurement, and that's meant to demonstrate, Megan has picked up where, where Griffin set it up, and that is, where we continue to track procurements that are out there. I know some of the ones that have generated discussion, if you're looking on the big sheet, I draw you down to, so Brooks Park, Brooks Park Lighting on Recreation. So Eric, I had a meeting last week with Eric Beebe, I'm meeting with the Rec and Youth Chair tomorrow morning to inform them that we're looking to them to reach out to our electrical engineer. He's done the studies, we have the next step. And just like we were able to get White House scoreboard and lighting done, we can get Brooks Park, but I need staff to engage those conversations. There was a natural hiatus for a moment when Griffin left and getting the department heads to pick up where they left off. But the good news is, we have that electrical engineer. He remains under contract, and he's ready to take the next steps on Brook Park Lighting. I know that Selectmen Valentine, I apologize, I, I had sent you the email, and I'm not sure if it was, if you were asking about the Judah Eldridge or the Darius Chase, but I have updates on either.
Okay.
But I don't have an update on something else.
Don, I'm after the house that was there and the development. What number is that?
So 70 Willow Street is property that the town has access to. The, the reference was for affordable housing purposes, so there's any number of things that the board could consider. But you may recall, last August, you signed documentation to realign the boundaries, to square it off for the neighbors. So since that's done, I can, I can revive that project to the next steps. I do have some questions that I can work with certain members indirectly, but tonight I would say, I think the next step on that is, we have to make sure that we declare that to be surplus property. So that means it should be issued, offered to any town department. I would argue that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the Housing Committee, or the Housing Authority would be town entities that could weigh in on that. I think we should also have a discussion about whether the board wants to contemplate the disposition of that property by sale and use the proceeds to benefit affordable housing. So there's any number of things that can happen, but the boundary being cleared up was a major impediment that's been removed.
Because, you know, my memory of this, but that's, as Don keeps saying, this hasn't been going on for 20 years, but it seems like it.
Close to.
Because there was interest in buying that for affordable housing by Bob Murray, you know, pushed a long ways. And it turned out that moving that house to affordable housing was too expensive to undertake. And my memory is, is that then that was separated out so that the surrounding property could be used for affordable housing. And, and so that was separated out and left pretty open to dispose of in a way that we hope to maintain that historical property of the house and use it for something.
So then I may not be talking about the right property then. I, I haven't located, what I've located is a parcel of land at the address I just gave that it's, it's, it's wooded area that's-
We call it Willow Street property, but the house actually fronts 28.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll work with Larry.
Thank you.
And get clarification. You and I will meet, and I'll put it on the agenda within the next two meetings to give a little direction.
So we can clarify that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's just been hanging out there for a while.
Joe, good job on the chairman update. Go ahead, Mary.
The one I'm curious about is the housing coordinator. That, I, I thought that was sort of a standard language, and I'm wondering why that one's still floating.
Well, Don. I'll tell you, based on my experience over the last couple of years, that, that's not the destination that we want to continue to go in. This is a stopgap. As much as I'm willing to say is, largely when the property was acquired from Jimmy Mars Lines, they were not involved at all. So I need somebody to actually really help, and so does the rest of the trust. So what we're looking for is a stopgap to get us further forward so we can review staffing options and perhaps fund partial FTE in the building that we actually control.
Okay.
So Mary, I'll get you more of an update on that. Don and I spoke about that today.
Okay.
Joe and I will talk about that tomorrow. And I'll get more of an update at the next meeting on that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may not to elongate, but I know that you and other members were also interested in the Judah Eldridge land, which goes back to town meeting. So as, as you know, Mr. Chairman, I've updated the chair of the Community Preservation Committee to let him know that staff, administrator right on down, we're reviving that effort to close out that, that land acquisition as it relates to that. So we have CPC funding that goes back three fiscal years. I've alerted the chairman that I'm working on that, that's been added to our procurement to make sure that we don't miss that one. And that's what lead me, led me earlier to the 70 Willow. Megan and I have been going back over old warrants, that I think there were projects that were orphaned, meaning I haven't found any natural advocates. So we're trying to make sure that we capture those. Judah Eldridge became one of those, 70 Willow Streets, another one of those. So we're going to keep looking for those to make sure that we're getting them back on track.
And the theme really is to finish what we've done.
Yeah.
We've all had that conversation. Obviously, we made great headways with Griffin, when Griffin was in there and staff. I think the, Griffin leaving left everyone in good position. Joe's now reassigning this to department heads where it's necessary. Brooks Park Lighting is a, is a critical one that we need to finish. CPC has obviously showed us over the last two years that they're going to want the money back eventually if we don't do these projects. Dave Nixon, the chair of the CPC, and through his board, gracious enough to give us some extensions on some of these longer ones. But the message is, we are, we are checking boxes. This list, three years ago, was two pages.
It's only two years. It seems like a decade ago, but Big Bertha was, Big Bertha was bigger.
We're down to, and, and some of these say done on them, so thank you, Joe. Moving on, update on Hall's Path, I think is where we are.
Yes.
Update on Hall's Path, we had a very productive meeting, Don, Joe, and I, with the attorneys after the lawsuit was filed, I believe, last week on Tuesday.
Correct.
We are, not much we can talk about because we are litigating it, but the attorneys have a very clear direction on where we want to go. And we are going to fight that lawsuit and fight what has been done on that. And that's about the only update I can give legally. Don, do you want to add anything?
What he said.
Joe, you all set?
What he said.
Discussion and possible vote, Mark Kelleher, Kelpa Her Farms regarding base scallops. If you remember, two weeks ago, we were given a presentation, a very nice presentation by Mark Kelleher, who is here tonight. The board showed interest in what he was trying to accomplish. The Harbor Master had not voted favorably in that, nor had the Waterways Committee, nor had Heinz Proft, our Natural Resource Director. The board allowed Larry Valentine and myself to meet with John Rendon to see if there was any middle ground or to see if there was any changes, and for Larry to be able to ask questions, and for me to be able to ask questions. My position stays the same, though I think it was a great proposal. Mark had sent me an email and used the word fear of opening Pandora's box, and I, I think that was an accurate depiction of exactly what we'd be doing. It's not about Mark's proposal, in my mind, because I thought his proposal standalone was a good proposal. It's what happens going forward if we pass it. His expansion, as well as being fair and equitable to other taxpayers and residents, for them to be able to have a grant, it would be taking away the ability for other residents to drag in that area if they wanted, and back to supporting our department heads. On this one, department head said no. Heinz Proft, our Natural Resources, said no, and our Waterways Committee said no. Larry, I will let you speak about your interaction with the Harbor Master and your questions and comments.
Well, Mark, I certainly appreciate, as I mentioned during the meeting, your proposal, and I, I like the idea. I did push back with our Harbor Masters, asking the question, was there, were there other sites we could use for that and give this a go, that would work for navigational purposes? After a fairly lengthy discussion, I'm convinced that it doesn't work. There's not an easy site on the sound that we could move that to, and the, I hate to, what do you call that, the fear of?
Pandora's box?
Pandora's box. I don't like that expression that much, but I think there is a legitimate concern that if we start small, there's, there's already been, already been others express interest, and we lose control very quickly, and there's no way to keep track of that. And so I'm on board with not moving forward of this, of, from the board at this time, even though I, I like the idea, but it just, and also, in all fairness, I have to respect the department head on this one and his, and his view. Not that I do always, by the way, but I couldn't find a legitimate reason not to.
Don, any comments?
Nope.
Mary?
Just, I, I feel the same way, Mark. I feel that's a fabulous proposal, but I just don't think it works, and I feel badly, but it doesn't work.
Mark, do you need a vote from the board denying, denying the request? The Harbor Master already has, it's in his jurisdiction. I don't believe the board needs to take any action.
I think so.
No, I, I don't need a vote.
Okay, thank you.
As I mentioned, I-
Step up to the microphone. Just name for the record, please.
Mark Kelleher, West Howard. I accept the, the decision of the board, although I think it's a, a choice, we'll come back again, because I, I think that there's potential out there, and maybe we'll take some other towns to do it for whatever. I would, just for the sake of clarity, and I've mentioned this to John, I would like John, John has to issue a 10A permit. I would like him to refuse me and have, I'd like to appeal it to the DEP, so in case I come back to you next year with better evidence or better things, that portion is at least answered. You know, that, that, the DEP has answered my appeal. But, no, I appreciate everybody put a lot of time in. I, I probably will come back again to you, and I'll discuss with John, because at least I'd like the chance to be successful. I'm only talking about one line, and you won't have people coming ahead of you. For example, we've grown kelp the last three years. I've saved a lot of time for the board and stuff, because like Glenn Fernandez has come to me and says, I'd love to grow kelp. Well, we've spent three years trying to grow it, it didn't work. So there is some benefit to at least trying something. And then, you know, if it, if we did try it, there would be, the, the, the permit process takes a year and a half, two years. It took me that long to get the kelp permit. So next year, if I come back to you, I'd say, let us try it, because it will take a year and a half or two years to see if I'm going to be successful. And if it looks like I'm going to be successful, I'll call the Natural Resources guy and say, you know, check around and see what other towns have done. For example, Situit, there's a $10,000 requirement. You lose a lot of the, the amateurs who want to do it. You have to have a real capital investment.
Thank you.
Yep, you got it.
John, do you have any problem issuing him a denial on the 10A permit that he requested in writing?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Rendon, Harbor Master. I, I think there is a distinction that maybe needs to be made. The 10A permit, I think, is separate from the permit that you would be authorizing him to, to go and, and do the activity that he's proposing. In, in my mind, I will not issue that 10A permit, and I'll certainly put that in writing for the reasons that I've stated, but the issue of maybe not taking a vote, you're not making a decision on issuing Mr. Kelleher a permit. And I'm not sure I'm clear on that, but I think it's two different things.
Well, in the, why don't we work this out, and then we'll bring it back if we need a vote. Mark, you and I can discuss it, what you need. John and I can discuss it. I love meetings. Okay, thank you. Moving on to contracts. Moving on to contracts. Mary?
I move that we vote to authorize the chair to sign the contractor evaluation form for the Cranberry Valley Golf Course cart barn construction.
Moved in second, any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0, Joe?
Thank you.
I move that we vote to approve the lease agreement for a 14-passenger van with the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority to be used by the Council on Aging.
And authorize the chair to sign?
And authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4-0, Joe?
Thank you.
And town administrators' report.
Before you do that.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, in looking at correspondence, the letter about that spill doesn't say as much as it does say. So I'd like some clarification in the future, perhaps with a letter from the Police Department, because I'm interested in, when that bridge got struck, was that equipment still there when they responded? If not, where'd it go? Who operated it? That kind of stuff. Because all it says is, they responded to a spill on the roadway. And they found later that somebody had struck the bridge. I'm really interested, did they call it in? Did somebody else call it in? Was the equipment there? Was it not there? So that's not a tonight thing.
Yeah, I'll work with the chief. Town administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I've been hacked. If anybody gets a, an email from me that has a subject matter of request, I am not with doctors and nurses, and I'm not looking for Amazon cards. Please disregard. That is all I have.
But I would want to be in Aruba.
No, that's the end of the town administrator's report?
Yeah.
Awesome. Selectmen's report. Don, Mary?
Nothing.
Don't have anything?
Mary?